Thank you for being here today. I'm now calling the May 27, 2020 regular board meeting to order. We live and serve in a city that is the ancestral homeland to the Duwamish people, Makoshup Nation, and Tsukwamish Nation. We acknowledge them as custodians of this land since time immemorial, as guests and, in many of our cases, as settlers on this land. We extend our deepest gratitude and respect to their ancestors and elders, past, present, and future. Now we'll move to roll call. Ms. Wilson Jones, the roll call, please.
Director Hampson?
Here.
Director Harris?
Here.
Director Hershey? Director Hershey? I think Director Hershey has just joined. We're just calling roll. Director Hershey? I'll come back in a moment to Director Hershey. Director Mack?
Here.
Director Rankin? Director Rankin? Director Rivera Smith?
Here.
Director DeWolff?
Here.
And then I think now we have Director Rankin, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
And Director Hershey, are you there? We are having trouble hearing Director Hershey, but I can see he is... We can hear you now. And so that's all the directors on the line now.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. And welcome, directors and staff. Superintendent Juno is joining us for today's meeting. And additional staff will be briefing the board as we move through the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely, consistent with the governor's March 24, 2020 proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. And I'll note that members of the public may also be joining via phone or online streaming. I will not be asking members of the public to identify themselves. Thank you to those of you for joining us. As stated on the agenda, there will not be a public comment opportunity today for, per the board's March 11, 2020 vote, to waive relevant provisions of Board Policy 1430 and Board Procedure 1430 BP, as well as Board Resolution 2019/20-29. Public comments are always emailed to the board by fax and by... On the agenda, I know we've received a handful in our emails. To facilitate this meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure that you are muted when you are not speaking. Staff may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear directors and staff. And just as personal note, we do have a rather packed agenda, so let's just dive right in. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments.
Thank you, President DeWolff. I just want to first start by thanking Dr. Scarlett and her team for putting together the Policy 0030 report and sharing it at the Executive Committee last week. That report will be posted soon for all to see. Second, I heard there was some interest in talking about a resolution declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and there was not enough time to get it on this agenda to be vetted by the full board. So I am going to read it, the resolution, and I will sign it. And then board directors, if they would like to, can sign in their own personal capacity as a director, and so it won't be a full board resolution. So I'd just like to read that. Declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Seattle School District to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas, the protecting... Whereas, Washington State has 753 gun deaths every year with a rate of 10 deaths per 100,000 people. Washington has the 39th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas, protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the district's highest responsibility. And whereas, in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just a few weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas, to help honor Hadiya and the more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe, now it is therefore proclaimed that Seattle Public Schools declares the first Friday in June, June 5, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourages all schools to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. And so that will be a proclamation that's created. I will sign on. And then, of course, all the board directors are free to sign on as well in their own director capacity, not as a board. And so what I wanted to make sure that we covered today is the Let's Talk tool. I know we've had previous conversations about it. And building trust with our Seattle Public School community has been a goal of mine since arriving here. And to build trust, we must be responsive to our community and provide accurate and timely information. And as you all know, last spring, we piloted sort of a software that's called Let's Talk. It's an online customer and engagement tool that's in support of this goal. This tool helps us streamline customer service and communication while making sure families, students, and staff get the information they need. We've now expanded Let's Talk to multiple departments. It's been really successful. We've received a lot of positive feedback, both from staff and from our broader SPF community. And so I've asked Heidi Henderson-Lewis, the Customer Service Manager and Ombudsperson Woman, to share how Let's Talk works. She's been really project managing this and working this through and has just been a phenomenal leader on this effort. And so I've asked her to highlight how the use of the tool has improved customer service during the pilot and the benefits of expanding Let's Talk to the board office. We know that you guys, we all get a lot of emails coming into the schoolboard@seattlenschools.org. And this is really a phenomenal time after you learn about it, maybe to have conversations about whether you would like to include that email address in the Let's Talk platform so that we can get everything answered in a timely way with accurate information. So one caveat that I will make because of the packed agenda and because we want to make sure we're clear on all the questions. We won't really have time for questions today, so I do want to gather those questions, though. And so please send those questions directly to Heidi after this short presentation. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Heidi. Thank you, Heidi, for being here with us today. Is Heidi on?
Okay, sorry about that. I just did my whole speech. And now I'm... So thank you, Superintendent Juno. I was saying that because this is... Let's Talk is maybe new to a lot of people who are on the call, that I have prepared a short 60-second video just to do an overview of what Let's Talk is, and then I'll chat for a few minutes, touching on what some of the benefits are. And I believe Ellie's working on uploading that for us. There? Hello?
Introducing Let's Talk, the cloud-based community engagement and customer experience solution that helps school leaders build trusted relationships with their communities. Let's Talk can be accessed through any device, anywhere, at any time. Community members submit their feedback, including questions, suggestions, and concerns through your school district website or via mobile app. Each submission or dialogue flows into a universal inbox where important or sensitive messages are marked as critical. The system immediately routes each message to the right team or person for a timely response. A backend dashboard helps you track and measure response times and shows you what issues are trending. Parents, students, and teachers are asked to rate the quality of each interaction. School leaders use that information to keep improving. Let's Talk is a simple way to streamline communication and build and nurture community trust. Try it today.
Great, thank you, Ellie. So that's a quick overview of what Let's Talk is for those who haven't had a chance to understand what it is. And while we're transitioning here, that video, we're gonna... I'm gonna chat a little bit about the benefits of it. I would say, as someone who has been working with schools, families, and communities for all of my career, from a position, from a school staff, as a parent, as a community partner, as a central office staff, it feels good to have a predictable and consistent operational system where we have been able to create like a centralized hub for questions, concerns, inquiries, even compliments, with the ability to collaborate internally for a more seamless customer experience. Now, that was a lot, but it is a big deal to have a system like this that can allow us to be smarter, work faster, and it's just robust in many ways and allows us to provide a more efficient service to anyone who's reaching out to our district using this tool. So you had mentioned, Superintendent, for us to... For me to mention maybe some of the benefits and how this can support the board office. Anyone who uses it, I think it'll support their work. As I'm chatting here, I'm gonna pull up my screen so we have a view of what... One way that you can access Let's Talk here on our website, if everyone can see this, we have this little tab that pops out. This is one way to access Let's Talk. And because now that we have this robust data-driven dashboard with all the internal capabilities, including collaboration capacity, we are able to provide the students and families and employees and even the general public a more faster response time from the most qualified department. So let's say someone is not sure what to do. They can click on that tab. They can, you know, select one of these topics here or just other question. They can also go to some of our... These are like our top departments right now that get a lot of flows. So we put them here for easy access. They can click on one of those departments and send their information. And if they get the wrong department, it's okay because we have this internal dashboard, as the video showed, where we can reassign it to the best department for the most... For the fastest response. So if we, like, for an example, I just click Other Questions. You can select I'm a student or employee. All this information comes into our system. And then it's really nice because, as described in the video, we can add buttons based on trends. So if we notice we're getting a lot of questions on a particular topic, we can add that topic button here. We can also add another department. So that way, it's just, we can cut out the middleman. If everything's coming in through a general question, then we have to get it to someone else. That slows down response time. So because of some of the mechanisms that the system allows us to provide, we can get faster response times, which is one of the number one... One of the number one areas that needs improvement, where families and community and everyone... Like, people aren't responding fast enough. It also provides us an opportunity to score a customer. So when this is all done and the issue or the question is answered, the person who reached out could... Is sent a survey, and they're allowed to score us, so 1 through 10, and give feedback, type in what worked well and what didn't work well for them. And we have been able to actually follow up with people who say like, oh, I... You know, they didn't answer my question at all or something, you know, wasn't right. We were able to follow back up and say, you know, we're really sorry about that. Let's get it right, which is a great benefit and is a game changer, quite frankly, as it relates to quality assurance. There's not really a way to ensure that people, when they reach out to us electronically, that they had a successful engagement with us, and this allows us to do that. Another really nice benefit of this tool is that with Outlook, you really... It's only for the English language. Like, if someone sends us something in another language, there's no way to respond immediately. This tool actually has a language option. So, you know, parents can select a language. Our top languages are there, and they can communicate in their language. And when they do that, it will come to us in English. And then we can type, and it translates using... Thank you to Bing. It's not perfect, but it's great. And we've been able to communicate with parents in their language. And so that's been a nice feature to our... To our communicating through electronic. So whether it's the board office or the ombuds office or the customer service or any department, in the middle of the night, as a parent, I know sometimes in the middle of the night, I want to send a message. I want to reach out. I want to say something. And maybe in the morning, have a response or in the afternoon. And when you don't speak English, it's hard to do that. But with this tool, they can actually do that. So that's one of my favorite features. Another one of my favorite features is that you can actually text to the system. So parents who don't do email or public people who don't do email, they can actually send a text that comes into our system, and we're able to get it to the right department for proper follow-up. So I love that. So those are a few of the... The couple of benefits I think are really nice. Adds to this Outlook engagement. And let's see, what are... Let's see, one other thing I wanted to show you guys here is... Real quick. We also have this great ability to poll data. So like, for example, I polled our data from April 29 through May 25, and we have 7,825 dialogues. And mind you, we didn't... This is a soft launch, just putting it on our website for a few, you know, one department. And we're able to poll this. Like, right now, our average response time is 1.5. That's the national average response time is 3.8. We have average customer experience of 8.0. The national average is 8.6. And, you know, I, quite frankly, I've been looking at the data. I think it would be a lot higher. There's a lot of user error where people are getting used to it. We're able to poll things that people are saying about the system and then look at the frequently visited departments. So we have this entail where we can make sure we're, you know, making sure the departments are staffed up, are ready to respond. Yeah, and then here, I put a little note at the end of March 2020. SPF began utilizing the Let's Talk feature, turning on the phone calls and texts into dialogues, which has been a great hit for a lot of our parents. They're really excited about that feature. So anyways, that's it. I will, because I know there's lots to talk about. And so those are some of the benefits, I think, of the board office was to utilize the system. And they can, you know, get it to the right person. If something comes in and it's not for the board office, they can change it and send it to another department easily within the system and know that that person's gonna get a response. And if there are any... If there's anything that, from today, that you have questions about, something you want me to drill down more on, because this is just a super quick overview. You can't even do the system justice in this little bit of time. But I wanted to put this out there. Please feel free to send me an email, reach out to me and teams if you're a staff person. And I'm happy to attend an executive committee meeting in the future to discuss this further.
Yeah, President DeWolff, I would offer any questions to go to Heidi in email form, and then maybe we'll collect those and present at an executive committee meeting to talk further about potential use of this tool for the school board email. You can see that there's a lot of great data that comes out of it and really good information, and it allows us to continually review information with ourselves so that we can get better and understand how we can communicate better with our community, families, students, and parents. And so it's a great tool. I know Heidi's been a great leader on this. I am totally bought into it and would just like to have further conversation with the executive committee about it.
Thank you. Okay. We have now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda. This is Director Hampson.
Second, Director Harris.
Thank you, directors. Approval of the consent agenda has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Hi, this is Director Rivera Smith. I would like to remove the minutes from the Public Affairs and Budget Work Session from the consent agenda.
I don't... I don't see that. Ellie, am I missing that on my...
Those would be the April 22 work session minutes.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry about that, yeah.
No, 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 that's good. Thank you, Director Rivera. Okay, so may I have a revised motion for the consent agenda as amended?
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended. This is Director Hampson.
Second.
Thank you, directors. Approval of the consent agenda as amended has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended, please signify now by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, here, this... The consent agenda has passed unanimously. So we will... See, we'll look at the April 22, 2020 work session. Is there a motion to approve this item?
This is Director Hampson. I move for the approval of the meeting minutes from the April 22, 2020 work session.
Thank you.
And can we specify in the minute that it's Public Affairs Work Session Budget as well, please? And a second?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Harris. All right, so this motion has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. I'll now call under directors... On the director who removed the item, and then I'll do... Go through the directors alphabetically for comments and questions. So for this item, we'll start with Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly, so I'm going through the minutes for this work session, both the Public Affairs side and the budget. I just found a number of typos, missing words, things like that. And after three or four, I decided maybe just it'd be better to pull it all together. I can talk offline with whoever produced these minutes, just to get them cleaned up. It's not... They're nothing huge. I think completely substantial, except that, you know, our minutes are our record. And I really think that it would be good to correct some of the typos, errors, admissions in them.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. To Chief Counsel Narber, can you clarify the process around this? Just to make sure I'm not missing anything as far as being able to adjust some grammar and typos and how that fits in here.
Right, this is... We did something similar recently with the minutes from the retreat. They had been on the board agenda and then were moved to a later board meeting to make some changes. So the motion that would be offered here would be to defer consideration of these minutes to the next regular board meeting. And then that would give an opportunity for Director Rivera Smith to work with staff on changes that she thinks are necessary. So that motion could be brought by Director Rivera Smith. And then if there were a second, that could be put to the board.
So Greg, can you clarify the process for that? Or that? We just... We just... Basically, we just made a motion, but it sounds like there might be a...
Lisa needs to make a separate motion.
Yes, you would recognize her to bring a motion to defer consideration of the minutes from the April 22 work sessions to the next regular board meeting. And then if there were a second, that motion would be voted on. If it passed, then we would remove... That item would be removed from the agenda today. Presumably, the minutes would be worked on and then they'd come up for consideration at the board meeting two weeks from now.
Okay.
All right, I'm ready to do that. I'll make a motion to defer the minutes from the April 22 work session to be taken back and corrected, the errors and edits from that, and bring it back to the next board meeting for approval.
Thanks, Director Harris. Do I have a second?
Second, Director Harris.
Yep.
Public Affairs and Work Session Budget. Thank you.
Understood. Thanks, Director Harris. This has been moved and seconded... Moved by Director Rivera Smith and seconded by Director Harris. So Greg, now we just take roll call for this item, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, so Ms. Wilson Jones, can you do roll call for us?
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
See?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Okay. We will now move to the action item on today's agenda. As I stated before, we have three items on our action... On our action... Excuse me, on our action item agenda. And I think I saw the number 18 on our introduction items. So as we move through these items and later the introduction items, I will first call on the committee chairs. And then I'll call on the remaining directors alphabetically for questions and comments. So now we will move to action item number one. High School Chemistry B Instructional Materials Adoption. May I have a motion for this item?
This is Director Hampson. I move that the Seattle School Board approve the recommendation of the Instructional Materials Committee to adopt the district-developed KEM-BE high school instructional materials as recommended by the High School Science Instructional Materials Adoption Committee. These materials were developed by Seattle Public Schools chemistry teachers in collaboration with university partners. The materials will be used as core instruction materials for Seattle Public Schools High School Chemistry B KEM-BE science classrooms. I further move that the Seattle School Board authorize the superintendent to enter into agreements and incur costs as detailed in Section 5 Fiscal Impact Revenue Source to implement the KEM-BE instructional materials for all Seattle Public Schools High School Chemistry B KEM-BE science classrooms for an amount not to exceed $367,845 covering school years 2020 to '21 through 2027 to '28.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, directors. This item, Director Hampson, and seconded by Director Harris. We'll now move to directors for any comments or questions for Chief Academic Officer Dr. Diana Backer before we vote. So I will now start with Director Rankin, who is our current Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee Chair.
Thank you. I do not have any questions or comments. We've... I feel like seen this item quite a few times since it was introduced in committee, and I'm excited to move it forward.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Okay, now we'll move to Director Hampson.
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Harris?
Deep breath first. As many of you all can recollect, the adoption of our new science curriculum was very painful a year ago. And the vote that I took to approve it was very painful. And I think that I've heard more about that than any other single item from frustrated parents and teachers. And I go back to my initial question the first time this was brought up by central office staff and an impressive group of science teachers that had been working very hard for a couple of years prior to the board being even advised that this was on the agenda. I do not understand why we need to grow our own when other school districts around the country are using curriculum that we did not have to put together ourselves and which may be vetted more thoroughly. I will be voting no on this agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have Director Hershey.
No questions for me.
Thank you, Director Mack.
Good afternoon, Director Mack here. I have no questions or comments at this time, but I plan to abstain on this vote.
Alright, next we'll, Director Rankin, excuse me, Director Rivera Smith.
Sorry, I wasn't ready. So, no, I, I hear, I hear Director Harris's concerns. I also, you know, I also really value that our instructors came together to create this, and I appreciate their work they put into it. You know, I, I think that the more you can tailor something to your own, to your own classrooms, the better. Not to say that the more national curriculums can't do that too, but anyhow, I, I just wanted to give that comment, but I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. And I also have no questions at this time. I know we've got to talk about this issue for the last couple of months. I will now turn it over to Ms. Wilson Jones for the vote.
Director Mack?
Abstain.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Motion has passed with a vote of five to one to one.
Thank you. Okay, then we will now move on to action item number two, Approval of the Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement between Seattle Public Schools, also known as the District, and the Seattle King County Building and Construction Trades Council, also known as the Council, for September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2022. This came through the Executive Committee on May 20th for approval. So may I have a motion for this item?
This is Director Hampson. I move that the School Board approve the CBA and authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement with the Council with the wage schedules and other attachments in the form of the draft CBA for the period September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2022, as attached to the School Board Action Report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the CBA. Immediate action is in the best interest of the District.
Second the motion.
Thank you, Directors. This item has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. This agenda, excuse me, this item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. So I'd like to invite Chief Human Resources Officer Dr. Clover Cod. I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. This is Clover Cod. I'm also joined by Chief Jolynn Bergy for financial questions and Director of Labor Relations, Tom Pulis, if there are questions at the end of this short presentation. So this bar is for the approval of a new CBA between Seattle Public Schools and the Seattle King County Trades Council, which would expire on August 31. The past one did expire on August 31, 2019. So the Trades Council represents a variety of crafts and trades employed by the District. They maintain our electrical, plumbing, fire alarm locks, electronic systems throughout the District, as well as many other critical maintenance functions. I'd like to give a little shout out to our crafts and trades for the work that they do in our District and thank them for their dedication. This new CBA, if approved, will have a term beginning September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2022. The parties have been negotiating since late August of 2019, met nine separate times, including a variety of phone meetings, and reached a tentative agreement on April 16, 2020. The union membership ratified the tentative agreement on April 29, 2020. And the wage increases in this tenement agreement are as follows. Across-the-board wage increases of 5.4% in 1920, retroactive to September 1, 2019, September 1, excuse me. Electricians will receive a $2.50 per hour increase in their base wage prior to that 5.4% increase to address significant recruitment and retention concerns. Across-the-board wage increases of 2.1% in 2021, or the state-funded and authorized inflationary increase, whichever is higher. And then across-the-board wage increases of 2.0% in 2122, or the state-funded and authorized inflationary increase, whichever is higher. The methodology that the District has been using when we approach wage increases in our recent bargains has been to identify nearby school districts or comparables. And we try to ensure that each of our job classifications ranks at fourth or fifth place out of approximately 10 comparable districts and not dropping below that fifth place. The wage increases herein do meet that methodology. And the $2.50 per hour bump for the electricians was necessary because when we started, they were 10th out of 10 in comparables prior to this new CBA. Other economic changes, a 50 cent increase in the swing shift differential, increases in the bonus provided to employees who don't take leave during peak work times in the summer, a new $50 per day on-call bonus for general foreman, a new 150 per hour premium for temporary employees whose insurance we can no longer fund under the new SEB insurance paradigm. And the non-economic changes outlined here, removing all employees to receiving electronic pay statements, language changes to comply with the Janus Supreme Court decision regarding union dues, language to reflect the new SEB insurance program and updates to Washington State law regarding sick leave, and a requirement that when negotiating future wage increases, the parties will review comparable school districts during negotiations. And with that overview, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you, Director Clover Cod. Now to Direct, now we'll move to Directors for any comments or questions before we move to the vote. And I will start with myself as the Executive Committee Chair. But mostly, if anything, I just want to share, thank you to Dr. Clover Cod and your team for bringing this forward and putting this together. I know this was a lot of hard work, and I know our labor partners have been really working on this. So I'm grateful that you're bringing this before the board, and I have no questions at this time. So now we'll move to Director Hampson.
Thank you for this work, and I am grateful to have the opportunity to provide some, I believe, if I recall from our meeting and executive session, that this gets this particular trades class for Seattle Public Schools, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Bergy, to fifth in terms of district pay for this particular job class. And I think it's absolutely critical that we're able to maintain equitable pay opportunities for our, all of our employees and union members. With median income in the city of Seattle, over $110,000 for a family of four, we're at a point where folks qualify for, for low-income housing at, at $95,000. And it's absolutely imperative that we're able to remain competitive as a district if in fact we want to accomplish our goals and, and allow our staff to live where they work and make it possible, possible for them to, to have a fair living wage in this, in this very costly area. So I appreciate the work, and I hope that this does get us partway to where we need to be. I think we should be number one in terms of our, of our pay, but I, I know that there's been a lot of hard work trying to get us there, and I appreciate the work on, on both sides to make that happen. That's all from me, thank you.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Next we'll move on to Director Harris.
No questions, and thank you, Tom, Tom and your team for negotiating this. And to echo Director Hampson's comments, finding skilled trades workers in the midst of the construction boom, at least pre-COVID, is, is a neat trick. And I think that Chief Podesta and the operations folks can, can speak to that. And I'm, I'm glad that we're upping our game. And we were convinced by Chief Bergy that we can in fact afford this raise and that it is in line with other raises. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Next we'll have Director Hersi.
No questions for me at this time, but just a huge thank you for the huge lift that this was. And I am just excited that we are working toward economic enfranchisement for our labor partners. So, big, big, big thank you for this and hope to see more agreements like it in the future.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Next we'll have Director Mack.
Hello, good afternoon. I am very much in support of the agreement as it's been verbally expressed. At the same time there, the documents that are attached to the Board Action Report have a number of inconsistencies in terms of referring to things that aren't where they say they're going to be on which page, and including the MOU is actually not attached. So my question is about whether or not those kind of technical aspects to the documentation that need to be cleaned up and corrected, including the MOU, which isn't, isn't present in the documents that are posted. How can we go about having the actual documents that we are approving today be correct and accurate?
Chief Counsel Narber, can you help us here?
I'm, I'm sorry, the, the, in terms of correcting inaccuracies in the documents?
Just, I think what Director Mack's asking about is, given that there's been elevation, that there are some problems. For example, it says this content is on this page in the contents, table of contents, but it's actually a different page. Can you share with us the process for both correcting that? And then, I think there was another question with Director Mack, but I think that was at least the first one I heard.
Right.
I think that there's a, just to clarify, the, there's a number of kind of editorial references that are mistakes, typos, I'm not sure. But the, the primary concern is that the MOU, which should be attached, is not included. So there's a, a large portion of the document that's not there, as well as a number of other issues with the materials that are presented.
Okay, so, so.
If you'd like, this is Director of Labor Relations, Tom Pulis. So, the MOU on electronic pay statements, the tentative agreement was to have that MOU outside of the collective bargaining agreement in case we needed to modify it after moving to electronic pay statements slightly. So that is why it's not part of the CBA. And as for the other reference errors, the motion that the board is considering does give the superintendent the authority to make minor additions, deletions, and modifications. And we also have an agreement from the Trades Council to work on those reference issues if this is approved.
Yeah, I'll add, oh, sorry. I was gonna just add.
No, I was just gonna say Director DeWolfe.
Chief Counsel Narber, go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna just say that consistent with what Tom just said about the authorization in the motion for those kinds of changes, it is not at all unusual with a, particularly a lengthy document, that, that's gone through a lot of edits and changes, that there will be references to Section 9 that later got renumbered to Section 8, or table of contents that don't measure up, and so that it doesn't have to keep coming back before the board as those minor changes are discovered. That's why that, that language is in the motion. And as Tom said, there's been contact already with the Trade Council and an agreement that that'll all get, all get cleaned up. So any issues along those lines can easily be resolved and doesn't, doesn't stand in the way of board approval of the CBA today.
Director DeWolfe, just for clarification, on the question of the MOU and it being outside of this CBA agreement, the, just, I, I, I just like verbal clarification on which things will be corrected in the documents so that we're clear on what we're approving. And the clarification around the MOU not being a part of the CBA, just, I would just like to, I appreciate what Mr. Narber has stated, but I think for the record, we need clarification on what things will be corrected. And the MOU is kind of a big one to have that stated, that it won't be a part of this. So if we can verbally have whatever clarification to that, I would be much appreciative.
It is, it's staff.
So, so this is Chief Clover Cod. The, the MOU is drafted, but it's not 100% final. So the, we may need to make minor edits as we look at sort of the first month of implementation. The MOU would not change in substance, and it would not have an economic impact on the collective bargaining agreement. We often have MOUs with labor partners that do not come before the board if they do not change substantive language in the collective bargaining agreement itself. And so the trades ask that we not include this language in the actual CBA, but that the language be done in an MOU.
Director DeWolfe, this is Director Hampson.
Director Hampson.
I just want to restate, as I think it's very clearly covered in the motion, that, that, my, my motion was that with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the CBA, and I believe the MOU has implemented, particularly with respect to electronic, electronic payments, and as we have seen with MOUs before, falls, falls under that and is all well within the guidelines of what we're approving.
Okay.
Point of clarification, please?
Director Harris?
Thank you. And this is, I believe, a question to Chief Cod. Is there someplace on the website that has a listing of all the MOUs? This keeps coming up, that we've got these other MOU. Yes, sir?
I was just gonna say, can I actually just make sure Director Mack doesn't have any more questions? And then I will hold to let you ask your questions. Would that be okay?
That's fine, thank you, sir.
Okay. Director Mack, any other?
Just the clarification, as I understand it, is that the MOU is not finalized and not part of the CBA, and it'll be negotiated separately, and that the motion we're passing is the general content of the CBA as it is. If, that's my understanding of, is that an accurate assessment, Mr. Narber?
I, I believe so. I, I'm not the right person to speak to the MOU. I think Clover addressed that. But in terms of, I think you, you said you wanted for the record a clarification of what was going to be corrected. I, I, I read that motion more as saying, look, things are going to be discovered in a long document, and I don't know that there's necessarily an exhaustive list ready of corrections to the table of contents, for example, or, or references that don't exactly match up. But that as long as we're talking about things that are on that level, the authorization has been made to the superintendent to make those technical corrections. So I, I, I don't think it's part of the task today to catalog what those, what those corrections are going to be as long as they're at that level of minor modifications, additions.
Thanks, Chief Narber. Any other, Director Mack?
So, yeah, so actually, that's where the clarification is needed. The documents state that the MOU is part of the CBA. But as I'm understanding, the, a staff, it is not expected to be part of the CBA. So that's not a minor clarification.
Can you share where you're seeing that, Director Mack? I'm not seeing it in the motion.
Not in the motion, it's actually in the documentation, and it states.
Got it, no, I understand.
Director DeWolfe and Director Mack, maybe I can help answer that. This is Clover. So it is very common for MOUs to be attached as addendums at the, in the appendices of a CBA. If you were to go on our website and look at the Seattle Education Association If you were to go on our website and look at the Seattle Education Association BA, you would see that there are over 30 MOUs attached and uploaded on the internet. And so they're outside the CBA, but they are sort of appendices in the CBA. So it would be essentially an attachment.
Thank you. Director Mack, I'd like to move to Director Harris. I think she had a question that is very relevant to this.
Yeah, that's no problem. Come back to me if I don't get it answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Harris.
And I think I may have half an answer from Chief Cod just a moment ago. Is there a place where all of the memorandums of understanding are uploaded with respect to our CBA? Can't count the number of times that we've referred to that, and our jaws drop because we're unaware of it.
So the MOUs that are associated with any given collective bargaining agreement, and I just gave the example, Seattle Education Association, they are all attached. If you go on our website, all of the CBAs are attached. And the MOUs that are applicable and still within the timeline of that CBA should also be attached as appendices.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Director Rankin.
Hi, sorry. I do not have any questions. I'm just gonna echo some of the earlier comments of appreciation for bringing, especially for electricians, because I know that can be a challenge to hire because our pay hasn't been as competitive. So just appreciating that we are working towards that as the largest school district in the state. You know, we want to have the, the best workforce that we can and, and also offer the best that we can to, to those workers. So, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I have the same concerns that Director Mack has already outlined. I'm hearing somebody else, sorry. So I guess last point, and I really appreciate this.
Folks, could mute your phones, please. Director Rivera Smith is speaking. There's, there's somebody still. Thank you.
I think they got it.
All right, Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you, no. And I appreciate there is a part of this motion that is to, with any modifications and all that part. So my question there is then, so since there are clearly a number of inaccuracies on the table of contents and referring to items that don't exist in the documents, certain, you know, sections that aren't actually even there anymore, those are going to get modified, I trust that. Is this then brought back to us so that we can see that that all happened? And that those corrections and whatever, as modifications and adjustments are made, is that ever brought back? That's my question. Not for a vote, but just for, you know, informational kind of sharing.
Director Rivera Smith, this is Clover-Cod. When we have a complete and final 100% corrected actual collective bargaining agreement that's been agreed upon, we can send you a link. It will be posted on our website, and we can send you a link to that so that everyone can see the final product.
Okay, like in a Friday memo or someplace like that? I mean, sure. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, no, no further questions.
Thank you. All right, let's move to roll call, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Director, Director DeWolff, the, the question that you asked me was, where is the, where is my concern? And the concern is still, when I look at the documents, the actual CBA lists as part of the CBA on the title page, as well as the table of contents, that the MOU is included.
Director Mack, I think it has been well stated that there will be modifications. And I, I don't think we can get any more answers on this, so I, I just would like to move on to a vote because I think they've answered this question a few times.
Okay, well, because the documents are not actually final, and we're not voting on a final product, I cannot vote yes, even though I agree with the intent here.
That's absolutely right. Okay. Ms. Wilson Jones, roll call, please.
Director Rankin.
Hi.
Director Rivera Smith.
Hi.
Director Hampson.
Hi.
Director Harris.
Hi.
Director Hershey.
Hi.
Director Mack? Oh, sorry, yes, Director Mack. No. Director DeWolff.
Hi.
This motion has passed with a vote of six to one.
Thank you, Directors. We will now move to action item number three. It is 1:55 PM. This is action item number three, Approval of Board Resolution Number 2019/20-36 to affirm the district's continuous learning plan and support the district's application to the State Department of Education to waive lost instructional hours due to the novel coronavirus, otherwise known as COVID-19 pandemic. This came through CNI on May 19th. Board consideration. May I have a motion for this item, please?
This is Director Hampson. I move the school board approved Board Resolution Number 2019-20-36 as attached to the Board Action Report, affirm the district's attached continuous learning plan, and approve the district to apply to request a waiver of instructional hours from the State Department of Education. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district. If I can actually just restate that to be consistent with the bar, to apply to request a waiver of instructional hours and days from the State Department of Education, immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Thank you.
Second the motion.
Thank you, Director Harris. All right, this item has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Harris. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement, Wyatt Jesse, I believe you will be briefing us today.
Yes, I will. Good afternoon. Wyatt Jesse, Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement. Moving this forward to you, due to the recent actions under COVID-19, the state has updated its own WAC in regards to emergency waiver requests regarding school days and instructional hours. And so, under that particular request, districts are supposed to provide a, a board resolution, which is attached to this particular bar, as well as a continuous learning plan, which has a number of attachments that we have already sent to staff that support the continuous learning plan, where we are stating the type of services we are, the amount of time we are, the supports, student engagement, as well as calendaring and grading. Those are the particular areas that are contained in the continuous learning plan that is attached to this bar. And again, these are the things that we have put out to staff, both teachers, support staff, as well as principals, to make sure that they're clear about not only the learning expectations for our students, but also staff expectations for daily and weekly engagement and instruction for our students, as well as our families. We are more reliant on our families as we are partnering in this actions. The reason we have to amend the amount of hours that we're providing, we're usually supposed to provide an average of 1,027 hours and 180 school days. But because of the closure mid-March, and with the directive by the governor, as well as OSPI, to have a remote learning starting on March 30th, and then the closure by the governor on April 6th, that we would not be reopening schools this school year. So we are submitting our plan. And so that's what I have in front of you is not only the board resolution, again, as well as our continuous learning plan that we've already been implementing and will implement as we close out this school year on June 19th. If we do not pass this, we will be forfeiting our $243 million on out, on our annual allocation for basic education apportionment.
Okay, thank you, Chief Jesse. Now, I will move to Directors for any comments or questions before we move to the vote. Again, I will start with our Committee Chair for Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee, and that is Director Rankin.
Thank you, President DeWolff. Yeah, we heard this in our last, what?
Can I just ask you a quick question? Can you just share some of the high-level stuff that you also talked about in committee? Just so we get a sense of some of the discussion from your committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we heard this, her, her, talk, discussed this item in committee, knowing that it was coming today for introduction and action. And something that I want to reiterate that we talked about in committee is that this is not a, what should we do, what could we do, you know, looking far into the future document. This is a right-now document about what ha, what we have been doing and what the, what the learning plan has been. And I also want to, I guess, note that the continuous learning plan is the, the plan, and that I know that people's experiences have not necessarily been directly reflective. What? Oh, I thought I heard something, sorry. That, you know, I've had ongoing discussions with Chief Jesse and other staff about the need for consistency and reliability across the district. And there's a lot of different factors and reasons why people might not be experiencing everything the same way. But so just for, for clarity and transparency, I guess, that what's in the document is things that we've, that we as a board have seen already, because they were things that were kind of happening in real time as we responded to this crisis, and what teaching and learning could look like right now, or, or, yeah, did look like right now. So a lot of the documents and the outlining of various goals and, and items that, and expectations are things that we, as board directors, had the opportunity to read as they were being pushed out. And that they just include things about, there's, there's, you know, grade level standards, expectations for, for families, expectations of educators, expectations of, you know, directives towards building leaders, and all of these things that come from central office as the, the set of expectations. And between the times that those documents are created and as they go out to buildings, sometimes things go, I don't know, take a left turn. And, you know, I'm very aware that the experience and the, the goals laid out in these documents are not what every child at every school and every building, every classroom experienced. And so I, I don't want to, I don't want to dis, I don't want to, I guess I don't want to not call attention to that because someone could look at this and say, well, that's not what happened for us. So just, just to clarify, this is in response to a mandate from the state to ask us what the plan had been. And this, the documents here are pieces that were the intention and goal and the, the, what am I looking for? The accountability and the consistency for the school level experience is something that I am still continuing to ask about, and that the public and our families can expect that we are continuing to ask about, to see if we can figure out, you know, where things, if they did get off track, where they, where they did, and why this information isn't making it all the way into classrooms and being carried out. So, but it's primarily, yeah, about expectations, about setting some grade level clarity around number of lessons, number of contacts with, with students, and, and that type of thing. And it is my hope and expectation that should we need to have a similar document for the fall, depending on what learning looks like, that we will get, that we will be able to work with, with all of our labor partners and our building leaders and, and our educators, and, and, and come up with a way to ensure a consistent quality experience for everybody. So, that's probably more than enough for me, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Rankin. Okay, next we'll move to Director Hampson.
Hi, thank you. I do believe that this provides, well, just for, for me, it's always important to look at things in context. And what this represents is, just as we have had to do with our contracts with the city to provide services, these are effectively the, our accountability to the state to provide education services, which, as this document's described, experienced a radical change in a very short period of time. And that plane that we built while flying it is, is laid out here in, in the form of a framework. And I think it does that fairly. And as Director Rankin said, even if not implemented with anything but, you know, kind of erratic fidelity, is, is an accurate representation. And I think it'll be an important document because it is, it's relatively succinct and, and yet also, I think, complete. It will give us, serve as an important benchmark for us to look back at what we did well and what we didn't do well in planning for next year, as I'm sure staff, and I know staff is already doing. And I hope that we have the opportunity to have that discussion as a board, looking at this and saying, okay, this is, this was the framework that we set up for this period of time, which is, you know, we've only, we've got less than four weeks left. And how, how did that go? What did we do well? What did we do not so well? What needs, you know, drastic improvement? So I appreciate all the work that went into it then, and throughout this period. And I know that, that everybody's been working tirelessly to do these things. It's a lot. And definitely what we need in order to make sure that we are able to move forward with our waivers and with our payments, with our, our revenues. So, thank you. That's all from me.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Harris.
This reminds me of all those happy conversations about the C-SIP plan, and that they don't have to be correct or enforced, they just have to be turned in. We would forfeit $240 million if we don't vote yes for this, yet it's not important enough to have a work session with all the board. And frankly, I find the, the phrase erratic fidelity to be brilliant. And the frustrations and concerns that we are hearing about several times daily from our families and our students about the difference in application of online learning, depending on your school and depend, depending on your school leader and your director. I'm going to be abstaining on this one because I don't think we're there yet, and I think it's a hugely important document, just like our C-SIPS are and have been. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hershey.
We discussed this pretty thoroughly, excuse me, in committee. And I'm just really excited to have this document so that we can begin thinking about how, you know, echoing what Director Hampson said a moment ago, how we can build upon this, knowing that we are going to be in a similar situation, potentially as soon as four or five months from now. So, I'm really excited to highlight the opportunities where we can improve. Family engagement is a huge one that we've been hearing about. And this document will help us identify how exactly we can do that in, in actual policy, right, actual action. So, I'm excited about it. Thank you. I don't have any further questions. But I would like to echo the idea of having sometime in the future a work session around this document to see how can we use this in a way to be responsive to what our families were missing during school closures as a result of COVID-19.
Thank you, Director Hershey. Next, we'll move to Director Mack.
Hi, good afternoon again. I have two.
lines of questions in specific to the WAC that was formed by OSPI. And the there's four different sections of what we have to be attesting to here when we're signing off on this resolution of the Continuous Learning Plan. And I'll take the second one first. I did contact staff ahead of time to let them know I was going to be asking these questions. So I hope that that was enough leeway to to find where in the document our plan is actually responsive to what OSPI is asking for. The, under the WAC, number three, section A says, "The local education agency's plan for continuous learning must establish a district or school-based system of collecting information regarding the student engagement daily or weekly to determine if the students are responding to district or school-initiated communication and participating in continuous learning. Local education agencies are not required to collect student attendance information for the purpose of reporting." So my question about the record of student engagement in the Continuous Learning Plan, I didn't find narratives speaking to that requirement that we're to report on that. We're supposed to have a system of collecting the information and then, so I'm not sure where that is in the document and what our system is. And secondly, how is that being reported to the board?
So the information that you're referring to is titled Student and Family Engagement. It is on from pages five through seven in the Continuous Learning Plan that's attached to the bar. And it provides a information regarding a system. The system, as you can see, just even in the WAC itself, really should start at the school level. That's where the engagement is for our educational staff to engage with our families and our students. Many of our students are younger, so that engagement is really critical for them to reach out. We do talk about the different modes of communication via email, phone, or online. Talk about different tools, the resources we we have provided, and then oversight. And the oversight portion is where we have our staff monitoring for who is on the different median, the different meetings, classroom meetings, or accessing their lessons online. And then we also have administrators checking in with staff. They look and review the lessons for engagement. Are they engaging themselves? They go into the online meetings to check on that. Then they work with their staff when we're not receiving the levels of engagement from fam- from students and work with the families to get students re-engaged or more further engaged, working along a continuum. And then as far as central office, we are reliant on our common tools. I think that's some of the deficiencies and the things that Director Hampson is talking about is when, you know, you're trying to turn around an organization where not everybody was using all the same platforms. Many of staff you have used or are continuing to use some of the other platforms for online. And so we are reliant on Schoology. Usage is our primary mode of monitoring. And so we do collect that information over time. We do weekly monitoring. And then I have work with the directors of schools to go out and work with inquiry with through principals. And so we've seen increases in that that level, but I'm not, you know, that's the system that we created. But I'm not a, I'm not a requirement of obviously reporting that data per the statute of collecting, not required to collect student attendance, which is different than the term engagement. What was the other question, Director Mack?
Uh, no, I I I I appreciate the description of the system that's in place and that there is some narrative that speaks to it. I'm just not sure if from my perspective, it's actually clear enough in the documentation and in what you just described to be responsive to this, establish a district or school-based system of collecting information. Because I I I don't know how that information is being collected, like the the this, the full system is is not really clear in in what you said, there's a lot of kind of piecemeal things, but establishing a system is, I think, a little bit more specific and comprehensive. So I'm not sure how responsive it is to this requirement from OSPI, but I appreciate the answer. The other question that I had was around number two, the learning standards. And it says, "Under the local education agency's plan for continuous learning, administrators, principals, and teachers must determine which Washington State student learning standard skills and knowledge are most essential for success in students' next courses, content, grade level, or post-secondary pursuit." Where in the document, in the plan, does it talk about the Washington State's student learning standards? And that we've established this as it was stated here in the in the WAC? I'm sorry, Wyatt, you might be muted.
Sorry about that. So that is also in the addendum under SPS Educator Guidance and Expectations for Continuity of Learning. And so, starting on page 50, it goes over and we use the term critical empower standard. That is relating to the academic learning standards set by the state. And so those are, that is in reference directly to learning standards for our students. And so we've highlighted those elements. I I know also Chief Debacker might also have commentary regarding your question.
Chief Debacker.
Mr. Jesse, can you say again what page that was on or where that was?
Yep, sure. So if you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just if you go, if you're scrolling, sorry, the length of this document, again, it's, I think it does speak to the breadth of the of the plan. Diane's telling me she got dropped from the call, sorry. The, if you go all the way to page 50 in the document, it starts to lay out what are those state standards. We actually link those directly to OSPI.
Chief Jesse, can you can you read the title of that page so folks understand? Because there's 50 of the of the full packet and there's 50 of the document.
Yep, it is underneath Addendum B1. The prologue is on page 49. And then the, it starts to go into specifics regarding the content areas. It starts with literacy and language development. And it says, like, the first questions we have, how can I determine critical power standards? So then it lists into what are those particular standards that we're working on for our students? Where can I find this scope and sequence? That's a link. And then where do I get those materials? And so that also links them to the other supports that we have available for them. And then then if they had questions, and as we think about our other learners, where can you receive that information and who can you contact? And so we move through those documents that goes into math and numeristry. But I just wanted to point out for you regarding Director Mack's question is, what are the learning standards? And right here are spelled out just those particular critical empower standards as we needed to abridge, obviously, our lessons because of the less amount of instructional time we have directly with our students, matching the guidance and the developmental needs of our students pre-K through 12.
And this is Diane again. I'm sorry I got dropped from the call. I'm back on and stand for any other questions, but I'm assuming that others have answered it adequately.
Okay, any more questions, Director Mack? Before we move on?
No, thank you for pointing out the page number which that one existed. I think my only comment would be that regarding the system of establishing the district or school-based system of collecting information regarding student engagement, I I still don't feel like this document is actually responsive enough. And I really look forward to when we're going to get information about how we're doing that on the on the comprehensive level that that we're being requested to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Mack. Director Vera Smith.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I I've been taking this all in because this is, you know, we had a very, a very robust, as I say, conversation in CNI about this one. And, you know, my notes just say CLP OMG because there was a lot there. And and as a few of you have have mentioned, this is, it's a plan, but how it's being rolled out and who, how it's being actually experienced by different populations is definitely something that needs a lot of gap closing because we have, we just, you know, we've been hearing from a lot of families, a lot of people reaching out about the parts that they're not, they feel their children are not receiving. And it's not just special ed who we hear from too. We've been hearing a lot of concerns from, but even just our general populations. We did talk about this, Chief Jesse, about the the minutes, well, you and Director Mack. And I have it in my notes here about the minutes per online minutes. And there's minimums and some given in different pages and sections. And I have here that you mentioned at that meeting that you would have, you were happy to add minimum number of minutes for live instruction. But I don't, has anything, this hasn't changed since committee, correct? There's nothing in here has been changed. Is that correct?
Nope, we, yes, we did make those changes as I I informed the CNI committee. So I did make a change. That change is on page 37 of the document. That is in reference to the high school minutes, so we're underneath the guidance of OSPI. And so I did spell out the minutes there as part of our conversations. I wanted to make sure that was reflected.
Okay, so page 37, I'm looking at it now.
Thirty-seven, yep. And then we also revisions to the, just the updates to page 20, I'm sorry, 26, also for middle school, just to make sure that it's reflective of the guidance in relations to OSPI and what we are working with our educators on.
Thank you, okay. I just said usually the agenda says updated and, you know, whatever, and I didn't see that note on there. So, so sorry, yeah, I was not, thank you for clarifying that. So again, though, this, you know, I I like Director Percy and Director Harris have mentioned, I would really appreciate a work session, I would have appreciated a work session on this. And obviously that there's still opportunity for that going forward. This was, as also noted, that this is purely for this school year that we're finishing out right now. And I really do see this this time right now as sort of is very much a learning experience. This is, this is the, this is definitely the, we're making our guesses and trying things that, seeing what works, collecting feedback, collecting the data. Because we haven't clearly perfected this and this, and parents know that. And the staff knows that. And we're hearing, you know, concerns there too about just lack of direction, lack of clarity on on things. So it's everywhere and I get that. We jumped in to this, this was thrown at us. And I mean, as a district, you know, this is a big endeavor. And but looking forward, you know, I really want to know that we are going to be adjusting our expectations. We're going to be adjusting whatever plan we have for that going forward and having, you know, work sessions where we're all getting a chance to sit down and look at this together so that as directors, we can bring in that perspective and feedback from community and from families. So, you know, I, it's hard, this is interaction right now. I know we're, I know we have to do this, so we're going to lose a whole ton of funding here. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I want to know, I want to feel and I, you know, I want to have trust that we are going to take this as a learning and take this and build upon it and use all the, all like you mentioned, all the information gathering we can from it and listen to the community as they're telling us where things are not happening because we can't fail our students. I know that this pandemic has put us in a tight situation, but we still have that on us. And I want to know that we're doing that. So again, looking forward to how we can move forward with this and how we can adjust those experiences and expectations. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Director Vera Smith. Quick questions. I just have a couple of quick questions, Chief Jesse. So the first one was, can you, I think Director Rankin was mentioning that this is a look back as opposed to the forward, correct?
That is correct. That is all about the plan that we had to develop within one week of the governor's directive. And so that's what a lot of those artifacts are.
Thank you. And then I think the only other question I had was for Chief Burge is, according to the alternatives, it says not approving the resolution would mean the district would not receive approximately $243 million in state funding. Can you clarify the, do you have a sense of the percentage or of our budget that that number is?
Hi, this is Jolynn. Well, I think I think it's basically the the apportionment, the number of days that we wouldn't get waived. So whatever those percent of the days are of the 180, $240 million out of a billion-dollar budget, maybe, I don't know, 20, 20 percentage?
Yeah.
I didn't think of it in that way. I just thought, I just thought of it as we calculated how much apportionment would we get each day? And if we don't get the apportionment for those days because we don't apply for the waiver, what would we lose?
Sure, I appreciate that. We've had a really great discussion today, so I won't ask any more questions because it's been really great. So I will now ask Swenson Jones for the vote.
Director Vera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Abstain.
Director Percy?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Abstain.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Motion has passed with a vote of five to zero to two.
Thank you. And as a reminder to folks, if you do have requests for work sessions, I know that discussion is forthcoming around kind of the criteria for work sessions, I think, in executive committee. But I I believe you you can talk to your committee chair about a work session. So I don't want you to think that there's not possible pass forward, that there are ways forward, just just work with your committee chair. We will now move to introduction items. This, the time is 2:27 PM. So we'll now move to introduction item number one, which is approval of the Operations Data Dashboard. This came through the executive committee last week on May 20th for consideration. And now I'll ask senior advisor, the superintendent, Sherry Cox, to brief the board.
Thank you, President DeWolfe, and good afternoon, directors. Before I get into this, I just want to first thank Anna Cruz, Eric Anderson, and Erin Bennett for being this Operations Data Dashboard to the stages that it's in now. As a reminder to directors, I just want to point out that we did review the Operations Data Dashboard at the retreat in March, which I think may have been the last time we actually saw each other in person. And then this came to the exec committee as this bar. And also a reminder that it is part of the superintendent's evaluation for the 1920 school year. And it's meant to be a companion to the academic data dashboard. The two documents will look similar so that to the general public's viewing, they would not necessarily know the difference between the academic data dashboard and the operations data dashboard. And the reason is that is because we see these two documents being closely tied together. I did want to just point out that this, the thinking that went into this by central office staff centered our student voices, particularly our African-American boys, when we were thinking through the operational parts of our system that play the operational parts of our system that play the biggest impact on student outcomes. And we focused on, um, thinking through the operations goal and the strategic plan, the predictable and consistent. And we really honed in on the language that uh, spells out to meet, to consistently meet the high service levels that provide school leaders, students, and families the information and daily experience that allows them to experience a safe and productive learning environment. And so centering students in that language. We, uh, uh, came out, um, with the operations data dashboard that is presented here today. Um, a couple of things to just point out, per our conversation in exec, uh, last week, um, we did add the language around the significance of each of these mes- measures and why they were selected. And then, um, there was a question around, um, the concern around transportation based on the West Seattle Bridge being down and Chief Podesta, can't be with us today, but he did want me to share that, quote, "We will need to plan for mitigation for the bridge and students will still need to get to school on time." And so he does not see that we would wanna change that goal based on the bridge being down. Um, we've also added the corrected survey dates as fall of twenty-twenty-one, and we've added the student satisfaction survey to this document as well. Um, I did wanna call out that, um, if we were not under our current COVID-nineteen closures, um, we, we would have worked on, um, policy ten-ten changes, uh, to be in alignment with our new operations data dashboard, but due to the necessary and routine orders, um, that work will come later. And at that, Director DeWolfe, I will, uh, answer any questions that directors might have.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Sherry. Um, so now I'm gonna call in directors to ask questions and comments, uh, on this item. Again, these are introduction items, we're not voting today, but, uh, we'll obviously, we'll start, um, with committee chairs again. And so since this is executive committee, I will start the questions. So this came through for consideration and I think a part of it you've addressed with, um, some of the clarification around student satisfaction survey and the transportation. Um, the one question I had that I think up, that came up in committee was um, just, uh, an understanding how divisions will be sharing their KPIs.
Good, good question. Thank you, um, President DeWolfe. Um, I did wanna also point out that while these are just the measures that it will be forward-facing, each division, even though not on the operations data dashboard, will be utilizing, um, KPIs similar to the ones they've used in the past and in alignment to the KPIs, um, that are recommended by the, uh, Great City Schools, for example. And in, um, thinking through, Superintendent Juno's, uh, evaluation for twenty-twenty-twenty-one school year, that does include, um, uh, kind of a general section. It made most sense that you would get updates on other KPIs, uh, especially pertaining to some of the measures, uh, in her evaluation, that you would get those updates when you got, uh, updates on her progress of her evaluation throughout the year and including on her final year-end evaluation.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, now we will move to directors for questions and we'll start with Director Hampson.
Hi, can you come back to me in the end? Um, I had a, took a lot of airtime during the executive session, so I'd like to give other board members time to ask questions first.
Understood. Thank you, Director Hampson. Uh, we will move to Director Harris, I believe.
I'll pass as well for the same reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Next up is Director Hersi.
No questions from me at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack.
Yes, I, uh, I, yes, thank you. I, uh, am just today having a chance to look at this. Uh, I had missed that it was, it came through exec and being operations data dashboard. I'm sad that I missed that that was coming through exec. And given our current, uh, situation with COVID and limited meetings, et cetera, um, I can understand, uh, why this came through exec and didn't come through ops. Um, but I haven't had a chance to kind of dive in deeply into the metrics and how they relate to our existing policies and various things. Um, so at this time, I don't have any specific questions. It looks, uh, reasonable. Uh, it certainly looks, uh, more visually pleasing, um, and helpful. Um, but I do need to take a little time to understand the exact metrics that are being used and how they're being determined, um, before I can provide any, um, uh, meaningful feedback. And I'll, I'll do that in between now and then, the action time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack. And, and if you could, if you do have questions or, or things that come up, please, uh, uh, email, um, whoever appropriately, obviously, and CC me, because I'd love to make sure that by the time the, um, vote comes at our next meeting, that I can follow up on, 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 uh, any questions or concerns you had too. Next up is Director Rankin.
Hi, sorry, I was looking at the document and couldn't click over fast enough. Um, I, sort of similar to Director Mack, um, I am gonna take some more time between now and the next time we see this, uh, to look it over. I, I, I have some questions in general about how,
Folks, please mute your phone. You can hear us all.
Sorry, that's, no, it's me. It's, it's in my house. I'm sorry.
Oh, good, no worries.
Um, it's, uh, um, I, I just have a question about how we, how we're deciding what to put on here and, um, and, and what to share and what to track on the dashboard. So, but I will, I will continue that thought offline.
Okay, and I guess, um, Director Rankin, I, I would point you to the, um, third and fourth, well, actually, the remaining three pages, um, that do go into a little bit of an explanation about the significance of each of the measures that was chosen to be on the dashboard. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you have between now and action.
Thank you, Sherry. Thank you, Director Rankin. Uh, and finally, we'll have Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I, yeah, I, so I attended the exec committee, uh, meeting where this was discussed, and so I appreciate the discussion you all had about this. Um, I appreciate that the, that there has been an addition for the student feedback, because that was one of the things that was noted at your meeting, was the lack of, um, representation of student input or, um, feedback there. So I, I see that's there now, so that's good. I also remember that there was some talk about that some of these metrics were going to be measured via the family engagement surveys, or family surveys, I guess, um, that are not happening this spring. Um, and I'm kinda trying to read through my notes to see where that landed. Was there going to be? I, it sounds like it was just, um, it was confirmed there was not any, there, there won't be the family surveys. So I'm looking just to know how that measurement will be represented.
Uh, Director Rivera Smith, um, there will not be family satisfaction surveys done this spring, uh, because of the closures, but, um, and that's why the language on the operations data dashboard changed to say fall of twenty-twenty-one, where we will have, uh, well, I, we don't know what situation we'll be in for school, but we will hope to have family satisfaction surveys going out next spring, um, as we have had in similar springs.
Okay, is that, is, is that area there on this dashboard the only place where that information would come into play? Or I know there's,
Yeah, that's, that's the only place. Um, it is at the bottom of the first page of the operations data dashboard itself, those charts at the very bottom. Those four are the survey results and it would give overall satisfaction.
Okay, and, and then I recall there was, and I'm sure Director Hampson or Director Harris will, um, fill in more on this, but there was concern about how we're using, you know, these surveys to decide, you know, to represent, um, figures on this dashboard and, and some, there's still, you know, some consideration to be given that these, those surveys do not accurately represent necessarily, um, enough of our district or, or enough populations. Um, so I, I'll leave it at that there, because I remember that was part of that. I'm sure they're gonna talk more about that. Um, otherwise, um, I don't have any further questions or comments. Thank you.
Right, and to go to that point, uh, Director Rivera Smith, um, uh, as a reminder, um, uh, Eric Anderson and his team have been working in partnership with the University of Washington as well as, um, CSSEC to learn, with those organizations on how to get, uh, better representation of our families further from educational justice, because we know, um, and are dedicated to getting the input from those families, because we know they participate at a lower rate than our white families from a traditional online survey. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Next we'll move to, excuse me, introduction item number two. This is the Satterburg Foundation Elementary Feeder School Grant.
Director DeWolfe?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Director Hampson and Director Harris, I forgot to come back to you. Director Hampson, you have some, you, um, go ahead.
Well, I do, I wanna ask, um, for, for those of you that didn't have time to dive into it, uh, I hope that you will take that time as soon as possible and get that back to staff. Um, I think this is pretty critical. There's a lot of work that's gone into this. And, uh, we, I, I don't think it's fair to let them get too far down the road without providing substantive feedback. Um, we did have a very rich discussion in our executive session and, um, I think, and I really appreciate the additions. Um, they, they give it a lot more weight, um, and the, and, and then the, providing the, the greater context, I think is helpful. Um, it, it's probably still hard to look at this as a, um, outside of the organization, um, and understand, and we wanna get to that, to that point. Um, I think the thing that is still missing for me, while I agree with the statements around, um, the prospective impact of each of these metrics, um, I'm still not, because there's, it's not talked about here in a quantitative context, uh, I'm still not feeling really as strongly as I, as I would like to about how these metrics are in fact indicators, meaning how is it that these drivers, I mean, that these particular, um, metrics are in fact drivers of student outcome? So, um, what is the correlation? Like, what do, what do we, how are they moving together? How are student outcomes moving together with these particular data points? And, and what are the data points? So you added the definition, you say the significance of the measure, having a high-quality teacher in the classroom, um, the single most important in-school factor in supporting student outcomes. How so? Like, to what degree and, and what way? What, what goes up and down and moves? Like, what do we see that correlates with that, that is consistent with our strategic plan? Um, so that's what I'm looking for. And, you know, I keep thinking that we're, at some point Eric's gonna be on this, one of these calls, and we can ask him, him some more detail. Um, but, and the same thing with, you know, you can use the nutrition example. Um, the, the rate of lunch participation. So for every X, um, increase in lunch participation, uh, we can expect Y, uh, increase in, um, well, we're not using standardized tests now, are we? But we can expect, you know, uh, kids performing or attendance be, going up or, um, better, maybe it's even better, um, uh, um, attendance in the afternoon for high school students, something to that effect. Um, where you're actually, you're looking at data and, and showing the direct correlation.
Can I, can I chime in for a second? This is Director Rankin. Go ahead, Lisa. Is that okay? I just, um, I just wanted to sort of support, um, what Director Hampson is saying and reiterate. I feel, uh, it was kind of what I was trying to get at also is like, I feel like, um, this is a lot of, of what? And what I wanna see and what I think Director Hampson also wants to see is the, is so what? Is sort of the, um, the storytelling behind it and the connection, the connection of these numbers to the experience and outcomes. Um, you know, the data, uh, is, is a piece. Um, but I wanna know what makes us as a district feel like these points are, are relevant and why they're things that we're, we're making note of and following. And if we can't answer that, then we should be looking at other measures. That's it, thanks.
That's, that's enough for me as well, Director DeWolfe.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Director Harris?
Uh, thank you. I'll echo what, um, Director Rivetta Smith said about the, uh, family engagement surveys, and I appreciate the, the clarification, Senior Advisor Cox, um, very much. Um, I still have significant concern about adding on-time buses, given the, uh, missing West Seattle Bridge and the complete corked traffic jam now during COVID-nineteen on the First Avenue Bridge and South Park and Georgetown with our bus barn being south of the First Avenue Bridge. We, we need to be able to do the possible and Lord knows, we understand the impossible with COVID-nineteen. And, and certainly those of us in West Seattle and South Seattle are extraordinarily concerned about, uh, our bus scenario.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director DeWolfe, I just wanted to add one other thing that goes actually back to your question, is that,
Yes.
Some of the data in the KPIs that teams are measuring throughout the year will come to the board in oversight work sessions as well. So the superintendent's evaluation check-ins, the final evaluation, as well as the oversight work sessions, you will see KPIs that other departments are tracking along the way.
Thank you, Sherry.
Question?
Yes.
President DeWolfe?
Yes, yes.
Can we footnote that information? We seem to lose it between conversation, drafting plans, and, and if we could footnote it, we have something to look back on about those KPIs in the other department.
Understood, yes. And, and that was, I think partly why I asked it and brought it up from our executive committee. So Sherry, does that make sense?
Sorry, I'm just looking through here, um, to see if it's in the bar anywhere and, um, getting a text from Aaron saying that it's not currently in the bar. But we could, uh, oh, Aaron, Aaron's telling me that it was too quick turnaround. So how about if we get some language in the bar that says that it'll be spelled out in, um, that you'll hear in oversight work sessions as well as super, uh, superintendent evaluation check-ins and the final eval, you'll see other KPIs. If, you won't see necessarily every single KPI that the organization is measuring, but you will get a fuller view across the system.
Is there a reason we wouldn't just get the full slate of API information?
Um, I, I mean, I don't think we, every department reports out every single KPI they're measuring. Um, I mean, you could look at how that would come to you all. I'm not, I'm not opposed, Director DeWolfe, I just don't think that's been past practice.
Certainly, right. Director Harris, does that answer your question or anything else we can?
Well, I'd, I'd prefer they, it be asterisk or footnoted on the big pictograph, so it's loud and proud. But I'll take what we can get.
Thank you, Director Harris. Okay, we will now move to introduction item number two. It is two forty-nine PM, and this is called the Satterburg Foundation Elementary Feeder School Grant. This came through the Audit and Finance Committee on May eighteenth for approval. Chief Financial Officer Jolynn Burgy, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, President DeWolfe. So this, uh, board action report, we're gonna accept $950,000 from the Satterburg Foundation to target literacy acceleration at ten Title I from the Satterburg Foundation to target literacy acceleration at 10 Title I elementary schools that feed into Aki, Demme, and Mercer Middle School pathways. The schools are listed in the bar. Uh, this is the, I believe, the fourth year this bar has come before the board. Uh, this is, will be our fourth year of the grant. Specifically, this grant funds literacy coaches. In Audit and Finance, we had a good conver, oh, I should say, I'm sorry. Uh, this work is also in alignment with our strategic plan. So, while our 13 priority schools are under the strat plan, have a focus on the lower grades, the Satterburg schools kind of come on top and support those upper grades in those elementary schools. So, it is really, um, something that we're coordinating with our other efforts. And in Audit and Finance Committee, directors had questions. And so, we had made some changes, uh, to the bar where we, the smarter balanced proficiency growth was listed as percent, and they asked that to be changed to percentage points. And they also asked for clarification. So, nine out of 10 Satterburg schools saw proficiency growth by grade level in percentage points on the smarter balanced English Language Arts between 1718 and 1819, the two years that we have data for. The one school that did not make growth in percentage points received extra support by the Satterburg team and is on a very positive trajectory. And that would conclude my comments, and I would be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Chief Bergy. I will now move to our directors for questions and comments, starting with the Audit and Finance Committee Chair, Director Hampson.
Thank you, President DeWolff. Uh, yeah, we had a good conversation about this. I, uh, it, it's, I appreciate having the opportunity, although I think it, it, it can be tiresome for staff. I think it's really important to have the opportunity to look at how outside sources of funds are utilized to, uh, to, to work towards the closing of opportunity gaps. And, uh, this is an important source of that funding, um, that allows us to, to stretch our dollars, for lack of a better term. So, I'm grateful to the, the, um, the Satterburg Foundation for that. And, uh, appreciate the, um, the work to, um, represent with fidelity the, the data. Um, as it's, uh, laid out, I'm glad that we have, um, some good data from those schools about progress that's being made. And, um, I think that's about all I have. Um, and I'll let other directors that were, um, part of Audit and Finance add any of their comments about the, the, um, the grant, but I, I fully support its acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Harris?
Uh, beyond grateful for their generosity and for sticking with us. And I'm just sorry they're not here, so we can't give them a round of applause. And who knows? Maybe by the time we pass this and accept it, we can do that and have folks show up to be thanked in person. But this really matters, especially when it, uh, rated with the Netholm Foundation in those middle schools. So, um, it's a pipeline, and it's a pipeline to success, and money does talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Next, we'll have Director Hersi.
Uh, no questions, just huge thank yous and looking forward to it.
Next, we'll have Director Mack.
I just appreciate the targeted supports for literacy that are being provided, and, um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack. Agreed a million. Okay, next, we'll go to Director Rankin.
Um, just, uh, repeat, support what everybody said. And I know this has been, uh, something that our schools and, um, communities have benefited from for a while to, um, uh, good results. So, thank you so much to the Satterburg Foundation, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Okay, Director Rivera Smith?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and, and I have just gratitude to the Satterburg Foundation, um, and, um, really great to see those, uh, results for those schools. So, I don't have any further questions or comments. So, now we'll move to introduction item number three. Approval of contracts for specially-designed instruction, tutoring services, and other compensatory education services, RFQ 02758. This came through Audit and Finance on May 18th for consideration. Chief of Student Support Services, Dr. Consi Pedrosa, I believe you'll be briefing us today.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I also have Chief Bergy and Director Campbell from the Special Education Department. They're also present as well to answer questions later on. Uh, in terms of this intro action for specially-designed instruction contract, I just want to give a little bit of an update. Um, this is an annual bar, um, that is presented for approval each year. Uh, these contracts are in place to provide specialized instruction for students per their individual education plan. While we can't divulge any specific information, but some examples of these services would be students with significant behaviors or students requiring specific mental health supports, as an example. And these are services that Seattle Public Schools does not have the ability or staffing to offer. And we are required by law to meet the IEP needs of the students. Um, I just want to add that at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting, some additional information was requested. Um, there was a question about community engagement. We added language to provide more information on what engagement takes place, which is with the impacted family. We collaborate and we coordinate with individual families to meet the specific needs for each student and support the process of choosing the right vendor to meet the student's individual needs. Um, directors also asked about whether this was a per-hour rate change, and the rates have not changed at this time. Um, the hourly rate ranges from, uh, 50 to, $50 to $125 per hour. And these rates are negotiated with each vendor. There was a question, and I'm going to leave this one up to, um, Chief Bergy, but there was a question around racial equity within the RFQ process. Um, so, I just wanted to make sure that Chief Bergy, do you have any comments about the racial equity process?
Um, my comment would be that we're getting this question, and it would be a change overarching about the questions that we ask our vendors during an RFQ or an RFP process. And we would also need to kind of consult with legal about what questions can be asked and how those questions can be rated in the context of an RFP or an RFQ.
Thank you. Um, and so, um, I've just, I've concluded my comments. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Pedrosa. We will start with, uh, our Audit and Finance Committee Chair, Director Hampson.
Thank you, President DeWolff. Uh, so, we, we did have some good discussion. I know, uh, Director Harris will, will, um, talk about the, the notion of providing, of having to contract out for these services, um, rather than providing them internally. I think, uh, when we have, it's always a debate, whether it's curriculum or special education services, um, when it, it makes the most sense to use, uh, internal knowledge versus, um, external. Uh, in this case, it's, it's truly, uh, a level of service and expertise that, um, as a parent slash guardian slash advocate that has worked with students navigating, um, through any number of these different, both this one and the, and the next intro item that we'll, we'll look at, uh, that are, that are, that need to be served, um, but for which we have no existing structures, either in, um, within the context of our CBA or our funding models that provide the, the, um, supports that really allow these students to access, um, any form of, of education. And so, when, uh, the district and families get to this point and, and do these through the IEP process and get to the place of, of needing to contract out, it is not a decision that is taken lightly. Um, it's not preferable. Um, it's what we ultimately get to, um, because there's a desperate need to serve the student. And so, I, I do really sincerely appreciate what the Special Education Department provides, um, in terms of getting from that, you know, large group IEP setting with the student and the family, um, and ultimately getting to the point of, um, of a service that, that can truly meet the needs of the, um, the student. I wish more than anything that we could provide these services internally. It would, um, require such a wholesale redesign of our special education services, uh, model from, from my perspective. Um, and so, I'm, I'm really grateful that, that the district, um, when we do these things, it's always for a really critical reason. And, um, it's a, it's very expensive, um, and it just goes to how great the, the need is. And, and, um, so I hope it's something people will take seriously in terms of how we advocate, um, as elected officials for these kinds of services to be more broadly available through our school systems and, but also through, um, other agencies in the state. Um, and that's, that's all for me.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Next up is Director Harris.
Agree with all that Director Hampson had to say. But, uh, if memory serves me correctly, for the last four years, uh, previous chiefs or, uh, assistant superintendents, whatever, have said that we're making progress and we'll bring this in-house at some point. If we're not going to, let's just be honest about it and say so. Um, and let's also, when we're dealing with our legislators and our fine folks at OSPI in Olympia, uh, we already know that the special ed funding is not sufficient and that these critically needed services and oftentimes legally mandated services, well, they're always legally mandated in terms of IDEA, but sometimes they're a result of settlements, et cetera, that, that we need more help than we've got now. And we need to raise that up on the priority level. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Harris. Next up is Director Hersi.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Director Rankin, or, excuse me, Director Mack. My apologies.
No worries. Thank you. Um, uh, I think two questions. The first is, uh, kind of procedural as to why, um, the items on the agenda today, three, four, five, six, and seven are all, um, you know, kind of combining various special education services. And I'm just curious why they're all broken out and not combined, or if it's possible to combine them? It feels very, um, disjointed when there's a, a number of these. I mean, maybe having it individually discussed is one thing, but, um, curious to know why they're set up in separate board actions.
Director Mack, if it were all combined, you'd be upset about that because of the transparency. Director Harris?
Maybe so.
And actually, Director Mack, we did discuss that in, um, Audit and Finance. And, uh, my understanding is that the RFQ process is different for each of these categories. Um, I, you know, agree that it would be easier to approve them together, but my understanding is that this is broken out because they are in fact, uh, different RFQs.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's, that's fine. I just was curious about that. My, um, other question, though, specific to this number three bar, is, um, in the board action, it does, um, list the number of students served per, um, agency or organization. Um, and I think that's something that we had in previous years asked to be included so that we had a sense of, you know, the magnitude. What I don't have a sense of, though, is are there more or fewer students this year than last year? And actually, kind of the corollary is, are any students that were previously, um, uh, experiencing these or having these services, have they been exited? And, um, are no longer having these services?
I'm going to, um, have, uh, Director Campbell speak on that. Director Campbell?
Hi there. Thank you. Um, yes, um, these services are often services that students may use for a, a brief period of time. Or these services are, are services that a student may require through the duration of their education. So, so the, the number of students served under this bar is about the same as it's been in previous years. Um, the reason why it's hard to really pinpoint a number is because of the nature of the IEP process, where students come into service, and then they may no longer need the service. So, that, that, it's a, it's a little bit more fluid when we're talking about these specially-designed instruction, um, services under this bar.
Uh, just, just to clarify what you just said, so, the total number of students being served is still approximately the same, but, uh, whether or not they're the same students that, um, previously were receiving these services and no longer are, is, is undetermined, or you don't know?
That's, that's correct. So, this, these services may be on, like, a, a student receives their IEP, their, an IEP team determines that a student requires this level of service. And then, really, the goal is for that student to become more independent. This may be a temporary service that is placed, that is put on the IEP, and then the IEP meets again, and they determine the student no longer needs that service. So, these, these services that are under this category tend to be, um, they, they can, um, change based on the student's needs. So, it's around the same amount of students that are being served, um, as, as it's been in previous years. Um, the, the students are not the same. Think, I think I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Mack, I'm not sure.
That's enough. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mack. All right, Director Rankin?
Hi. Um, I, uh, just, yeah, I wanted to, um, kind of respond generally to a couple of things I heard other, other directors say, um, which was, uh, Director Hampson's comment about needing to, you know, to, to allow for some of these to be provided in-house. We would need to completely redo how we deliver special education services. Um, nothing would please me more than to do that. Uh, but given our, our current structure, um, where we send students to services instead of services to students, um, that, that isn't possible. Um, so, I know that some of these services are for, you know, very much more highly impacted students, um, than, uh, is the average need of a student receiving special education services. Um, I think it's important to remember that special education services are, and the IDA protects students' rights to access free and appropriate public education. Um, so, uh, you know, if, if someone sees this and thinks like, oh, that's so much money, you know, why did that family get that? It's, it's not a, it's not a luxury service. It's actually that student or this group of students requires much more support in order to access the education that, um, that their typically developing peers are accessing. Uh, I also want to just say, you know, I'm not sure the different RFPs or RFQs require them to be broken out, but I also just generally really appreciate seeing them broken out because these are very, very different services, um, for totally different needs. So, the item three that we're looking at right now, you know, that is one where I would be more interested, uh, or interested in knowing how those are things we could maybe bring, you know, how, be provided by Seattle Public Schools in some way at some point. Um, but therapeutic day service, you know, a, an agreement with a hospital, residential, uh, placement, those are things that are, are just, you know, we can't as a district provide that. And it doesn't even, it doesn't really make sense for us to, even if we could, just based on, um, the very, uh, specialized services and support and programs that have been built up around meeting the needs of a child that might need that. Um, and, and the, the relatively low number of children that would need to access that. It, it wouldn't, it makes a lot more sense for a smaller number of entities to provide those highly specialized services, rather than every school district try to, um, do that for the, the small number of students that they may or some years may not have. Um, and so, um, yeah, I just, I appreciate getting to see this information and, um, kind of put a, um, not, not a face, because obviously the kids are, it's private information. obviously the kids are, it's private information, but just to really have the opportunity to not only obviously approve the funds, but also just acknowledge and talk about all the different type, the range of services and supports that, um, students and families are seeking and need access to. And, um, you know, I think a lot of times these families feel very invisible and very powerless. So, um, I just, I just kind of want to make note that this really, it's not extra, it's not, it's not something that, um, you know, people are, are trying to get. It's, it's, these children and these families need and deserve this support, um, to access the education that, um, typically developing students have access to. And so, um, it's, it's really important. And so I just, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director DeVette Smith?
Thank you. Um, I, so, we did have a great conversation about this, um, in A and F and I appreciate, I really don't have much to add that people didn't know to cover. Um, just to say that, um, we were definitely concerned, or, you know, we were looking into the whole community engagement piece of this and I see that has been expanded on. Um, but it, you know, it's still, the takeaway was still sort of for me that it focuses up more on vendor engagement, um, and not so much with direct engagement with this, with any advocacy groups like, such as, um, Seattle Special Ed, PTSA or things like that, um, groups that can give us that insight. I see that obviously we're engaging with the families who receive these services, of which there are very few. So, um, it's hard to argue with that, but just looking at, um, and I keep saying all these bars seem to be, uh, on the same sort of vein of, of need and, um, what the contracts entail. So, um, just knowing that we perhaps do give a look at how we're engaging with community in these as opposed to leaving it to a kind of like, almost in financial viewpoint perspective of doing it for the RFQs. Um, but that is all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Director DeVette Smith.
Sorry, sorry, uh, President DeWolfe, it's Director Rankin. Can I ask a, throw in another question?
Certainly.
Um, I have a curiosity, um, in general that can be answered offline for, uh, Dr. Pedrosa and Director Campbell. Um, I have curiosity about the, uh, demographic information for students receiving these services. If there's a way that the board can view that without, um, compromising student identity. Um, I am very curious about, uh, the provisions of these services and ensuring that, um, they're being equitably applied, or if there's other information that might help us better serve students by knowing that, um, that their racial information. Uh, so I guess that's just a request. It doesn't have to be answered now.
Okay, thank, I was just going to interject that we have, we do keep that data and so I'll work with the team to figure out how to get it to you in a, in a, in a, in a good timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Pedrosa. Uh, and, um, my question, uh, well, I guess it's first a statement which I, I believe that special education services are basic education. Uh, I also understand that we, um, are not being fully reimbursed for this form of basic education. So I was curious if either Dr. Pedrosa or Chief Bergy could provide the gap between what we provide in special education services and what the state reimburses us? Cause I know there's a large millions, millions of dollars of gap. And if it's not easily available now, I can wait till action.
Director DeWolfe, this is Dolan. Um, you, the state is shorting us about seventy million dollars a year. That's the, that's how much more we pay. And then as far as these contracts, the way the state, state funding formula works is funny. It's either, if you have super expensive kids, there's a whole nother mechanism to go ahead and get service paid for with through safety net. So a very high cost student can be almost fully reimbursed for us. Where a student that is maybe five thousand or ten thousand dollars above what the state provides is not.
Thank you. Okay. We will move to, uh, it is doing a time check. It's 2:15. We will move on to introduction item number four, approval of contracts for therapeutic day treatment service. This came through the Audit and Finance Committee on May 18th. Dr. Pedrosa, I believe you will be briefing us again.
Yes, I will. So similar in the same vein, just, um, just to, um, let everyone know, this is also an annual bar that is presented for approval each year. Um, these contracts are in place to provide therapeutic treatment services that SP, SPS is not, Seattle Public Schools is unable to provide, um, in the comprehensive school settings. Um, these services are determined by students' IEP teams and we are legally mandated to provide as determined by the IEP teams. Um, just in response to what the board asked previously in regards to this bar, what are these services? Um, therapeutic day treatment services support students in academic and social emotional areas in a separate educational setting. Um, due to FERPA concerns, we're unable to share specific examples in the setting, but could provide more information individually. And that concludes my comments. If there's any comments or, um, questions.
Thank you. Okay. We'll, we'll start with Director Hampson, who is our Audit and Finance Committee Chair.
Yeah, I made, uh, basically combined my comments, um, under the last intro item, so, um, nothing, uh, additional from me. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Director Harris?
Uh, go ahead and, and box up all of my comments to the same ones.
Okay.
For issues number four through seven. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Director Harris. Director Hersi?
No comments from me. We can keep going.
Thank you. Director Mack?
Uh, I'm just curious to know on this one, if there is an increase in the number of students, uh, year over year for this, uh, board action?
For therapeutic treatment?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Director Campbell, can you answer that question, please?
I sure can. Um, there are approximately the same number of students that are being treated in therapy, or that receive their services in therapeutic day service placements. So a slight change up or down per year, but typically the same number of students.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Director Mack?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Director Rankin?
Nope.
Thank you. Director DeVette Smith?
I'm so sorry. No questions for me.
No worries. Uh, and I have no questions at this time. Okay. We'll move on to introduction item number five, approval of agreement with Seattle Children's Hospital for hospital-based educational services. This came through Audit and Finance Committee on May 18th for approval. Dr. Pedrosa, I believe you'll be briefing us once more.
Yes, um, again, this is a, also an annual bar that is presented for approval each year. Um, Seattle Children's Hospital provides hospital-based instruction in the form of tutoring as supported by OSPI funds. Per state law, we are required to act as a flow-through agency for Seattle's Children's Hospital to access the OSPI funds to support the education of the students at Children's Hospital. As the flow-through agency, Seattle Public School processes education payments and reports yearly to OSPI. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. And I believe Director Hampson and Director Harris have, um, said that their comments apply to this, so I'll move to Director Hersi.
Actually, Director DeWolfe?
I'm sorry, Director Hampson. Go ahead. Audit and Finance Committee Chair.
Yeah, I said that for the last one. But for this one, um, I did want to just note, for the, the record, um, that, uh, though we have no, uh, influence over the programming uh, that occurs at this site because we are a pass-through entity, I do think, uh, it's worth exercising our, um, our, our modest influence and discussing, um, with OSPI about the cultural appropriateness of that programming at Children's Hospital, the experience from families, um, as this is in, in my district and my community, um, that are furthest from educational justice has been that they've struggled, struggled to find them, uh, it to be a culturally responsive environment. Um, and so I plan to take that, um, those questions at an appropriate time to OSPI.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Hersi?
No questions.
Director Mack?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Yeah, um, I, uh, we have a policy in place. So this doesn't, as Director Hampson was saying, um, in terms of the content or what the service is that we're pass-through. Um, I am wondering though, how this dovetails with, um, our, we, our policy around students at a hospital that, uh, provides, I think it's mostly just kind of canned online curriculum and access to a tutor of some sort. Um, uh, so I'm, I am curious about that. Uh, and I also, in terms of hospital-based educational services, um, in thinking about, uh, something that Director and, Director Hampson and I had discussed, uh, the need for in Seattle Public Schools pre-COVID is, uh, a more robust distance learning policy, um, that provides access, i- i- that's, that's more than a policy that gives permission essentially for a student to access something that's completely online without, um, a classroom teacher, but that would move us towards, uh, a distance learning policy, um, whereby a student with an extended hospital stay or home, homestay or, uh, un- un- they're, um, unable to, to attend school, um, for an extended period of time for whatever reason. Um, I would really like to see this type of thing incorporated into a distance learning policy so that a student staying at the hospital, um, if they wanted to and if they were able to, could somehow participate, uh, in more of a, um, classroom schedule. So I'm just sort of putting that out there in, uh, the general, the general sphere that I know that a distance learning policy is, is, now, n- now there's a little more urgency around it, whereas before, um, uh, when we brought it up, it was, you know, positively received but not seen as something urgent. It is pretty urgent. Um, but I think, uh, not only in the context of, of students being at home right now in the midst of a global pandemic, but also for a child who is, um, in non-pandemic times, uh, away from school for a time, um, I would like us to be able to, to find ways to influence or have control over what, what we can provide to them more than, um, this kind of agreement of a pass-through so that, uh, kids can stay connected with their classmates and their schools and their teachers. Um, so, that's it.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director DeVette Smith?
No questions or comments from me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have none at this time as well. Thank you, Dr. Pedrosa. So now let's move to introduction item number six. This is approval of contact tracks for sign language interpreter vendors RFQ 11641. This came through Audit and Finance Committee on May 18th for approval. Dr. Pedrosa?
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Really quickly, before we move on, just giving a heads up at three, uh, excuse me, at fourth, I'm on a different time. In about seven minutes, I'm going to have to hop out to, um, take a call with a student from federal ways. So if I sign off, that is why.
Understood. Thank you, Director Hersi.
Thank you. Um, so this is the annual bar that is presented annually. Um, Seattle Public School students with individual education programs may require, uh, sign language interpretation services, and at times the district is unable to provide, um, that service. So, uh, we do, while we do, uh, have a staff of ASL interpreters, um, SPS is not able to recruit and hire enough sign language interpreters to meet all of the needs of our students. But that concludes my, uh, comments.
Thank you, Dr. Pedrosa. Now we'll start with Director Hampson, Audit and Finance Committee Chair.
Oh, yeah. So, um, back to kind of some of the other, um, comments. Um, I didn't have any specific, um, comments or questions about this item.
Thank you. Um, and, and did I, did I skip one, folks? I want to make sure I did I skip number five, which is Seattle Children's Hospital?
No, you didn't skip it.
Okay. I'm sorry. They're all, they're just, these five are blending together. Uh, apologies. Director Harris? I'm sorry. You actually said you're good through seven. So Director Hersi?
No additional questions from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mack?
No questions on this bar. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rankin?
No questions.
Thank you. Director DeVette Smith?
No questions from me.
Thank you. And none from me here, Dr. Pedrosa. So now we'll move to introduction item number seven, approval of residential contracts with the New England Center for Children and Lake Mary Center. This came through Audit and Finance Committee on May 18th for approval. Dr. Pedrosa, one last time.
Yes, thank you. And I'll, I'll just repeat that this is an annual bar that is presented annually for approval. Um, these contracts are in place to provide residential services that we are unable to provide in Seattle Public Schools comprehensive school settings. Um, these services are determined by students' IEP teams and we are legally mandated to provide these services. Students who receive services in residential settings are served out of state and at school, out of state. And, uh, we are, are unable to give specific or detailed information due to FERPA considerations.
Thank you. All right. We'll start with Director Hampson, our Audit and Finance Committee Chair.
Hi. Yeah, just repeat the, um, my gratitude that we're able to support families in finding these options, particularly given that they, that they don't exist, um, closer to home. It's got to be one of the hardest decisions that, um, school, um, communities and particularly families have to make. Um, I'm grateful that we're able to do this. And I'll pass it on.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Next we'll move to Director Hersi.
I'm just echoing, uh, Director Hampson's sentiment and with that, I'm going to go ahead and step onto me with my student and I hope everybody has a great rest of your day. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Director Hersi. Director Mack?
No questions. Thank you. I'm sorry. Did, did I not come through? I had no questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Mack. Next up is Director Rankin.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, to echo what Director Hampson said, um, that these, uh, residential contracts that we have through Seattle, for families and students in Seattle Public Schools are very, very far away because Washington State does not, um, does not, uh, has not invested in making these resources available to people here where they live. And, um, while it's a good thing that we're able to still provide services for these kids, um, I really can't imagine having a child in need of this care and these services, um, and, and having the only choice be to send them, um, you know, on a six-hour flight away from me. Um, so I, that's just sort of a general call out to our state legislature that, um, we don't, we don't have the resources in our state to serve the residents of our state, um, with this type of service. And also just, um, we have a real gap in mental health care and counseling in general, especially for children.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director DeVette Smith?
No questions or comments from me. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. And I have no questions, uh, as well, Dr. Pedrosa, but thank you for sticking with us and, uh, for all of your, um, support.
Thank you. You guys have a great afternoon.
Thank you. We'll now move to introduction item number eight, review and approval of the 2020 Career and Technical Education Annual Plan per Board Policy Number 2170. This came through Curriculum and Instruction on May 19th for approval. So Chief Academic Officer Dr. Diane DeBecker, I believe you'll be briefing us today.
Thank you, President DeWolfe. Can you confirm that you hear me?
We do hear you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's my pleasure to introduce the CET, or the CTE plan. Um, this is part of a requirement under Policy 2170 that requires that we annually share this plan with you. And for the past three years, um, we have organized this plan around the seven strategies as shown on the plan, or in the plan, beginning on page five and through page 13. And this year, we've also included our five-year plan that we submit to OSPI. A few highlights of, for the plan that you may be interested in, an overview of enrollment. We have seen an increase in overall head count across all the CTE programs in middle school, high school, and at the Seattle in middle school, high school, and at the Seattle Skill Center over the past five years. But there may be some questions about the chart that you see within the bar because it looks like the head count's going down. That's actually due to a change in how we had to calculate, uh, full-time enrollment. Um, that was changed through a WAC revision a few years ago. So we can answer more about that if anybody's interested. We're also very happy and pleased with how the racial equity analysis has, um, come into play during this particular year's bar. Um, it's, it's amazing what, uh, difference a year makes. Um, I think about, as we brought this plan to the board last year, we didn't have really our strategic plan in place, not the way that we have it now. Um, part of the strategic plan, we commonly refer to as Goals Four and Five, which is, uh, ninth grade on track and college and career ready. And we know that our students further from educational justice, especially our African-American males, um, are really highlighted in the plan and also in our CTE plan that we have here. Um, we have tried to promote enrollment for students further from educational and just, uh, educational justice by making sure that we have seven sustainable pathways, as you've seen within this plan. We also are doing direct marketing and recruitment to students. Um, we're working with an agency that conducted focus groups around student interest in CTE. And I know that in the past and with past boards, they've been very interested in how do we increase enrollment? And how do we make sure that students are aware that these opportunities are for them? Another thing that has happened in the past year is the, um, the Community Workforce Agreement that the board has worked very hard on and ensuring that we are able to offer our students some opportunities with some, um, very lucrative positions in Seattle and, in some of our CTE areas. We also had the Summit last year with our industry partners, which allowed us to open the doors and work with more partners in, um, all areas of the continuum of CTE, from having introduction to different careers to all the way up to doing internships. Um, this was presented at CNI a few weeks ago, and we did have some questions, and we've responded to those questions. Um, one of those was around the breakout for the ethnicity and race of our CTE educators. So we have added that in. Um, we have also, um, talked about how there is the intersection between the Student-Community Workforce Agreement and our Skill Center. Um, we also on page five about the participation of our special ed students. So we have addressed that in terms of percentages. Um, and I believe that that is enough of introduction at this point. Um, I want to give thanks, uh, to Caleb Perkins and his team, uh, Jane and Dan and others for the work that they put into this. And I think that some of them are on the line too, if we have specific questions. That's all from me, President DeWitt.
Thank you, Dr. Diane Debacker. We will now move to directors for questions and comments, starting with our Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee Chair, Director Rankin.
Thank you. Yeah, we had, um, a great, uh, explanation or presentation of this in our last committee meeting. And, um, yeah, super big shout out to Caleb Perkins and Jane Hendrickson. And, um, uh, Dan, whose last name Dan Glau-
Goldsman.
Goldsman. Um, uh, Ms. Hendrickson in particular was so enthusiastic and supportive and excited to share, um, about the work of this, of the CTE program, that it was just, um, it was a really nice bright spot, honestly, and a lot of kind of stuff that's happening right now to, um, to hear the passion for our students and, uh, how participation is going. Um, it was really, really great. And, uh, it was particularly, as, uh, Dr. Debacker said about the racial equity piece, um, it was really awesome to see, uh, how much, how, how closely the demographics of the students participating in CTE, um, mirror the demographics of our district, um, including in special education. So, uh, I think it's, it's great that these opportunities are being made available and that we're, um, working hard, like, to really advertise and reach students instead of it just being like a thing that's available. Um, because as we know, these are, you know, uh, can lead to highly skilled careers, really well-paid, union, family wage work. Um, so I just really appreciated, uh, the presentation and, um, and I'm excited to keep talking about it. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin. All right, well, next we'll move to Director Hampson.
Hi, thank you. Um, I appreciated, uh, this presentation and the read. I think my, my primary question has to do with, um, kind of how the distance learning, um, digital education component works. And I saw it presented, but I was having a hard time, uh, kind of grokking the, the, the proposed transition or what, what ex, the expectations are for how this would look. It, it looked in the presentation like it was something that would be developed over a period of four years versus, um, there being a more comprehensive plan for the distance learning version of this for 2020 to 21. Um, and maybe that's because, like, everything that we're trying to plan for, for next year, we don't know exactly what the possibilities are, um, or, or if there will be in-person possibilities. So I was just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit. How did you weave that into this presentation?
So this is Jane Hendrickson. Thank you so much for, uh, having me here today. And I will talk to the CTE piece. Um, so as far as transition, of course, is, um, you know, during this COVID, um, you know, crisis and into looking at what next year might look like. Um, our, our CTE teachers in our courses have transitioned. I mean, fortunately for us and CTE, a lot of it is, uh, you know, there's a lot of, uh, influence of technology in what we do. Uh, we do have some challenges in, in a couple of different areas. One of those is our worksite learning, which is our internship program. Uh, and so, and looking at what that will look like for students moving forward, um, and certainly ones who are already in that place. And we were able to transition that as well into, um, you know, and honoring their work, um, starting in March. And so our teachers have been very creative. Um, I've seen some ma, uh, major innovation, um, happening, um, across all of our buildings. One of the, the areas that we, we do look at, um, and how we will, uh, address best works is in our labs, in our skill-based labs. And so, uh, that is definitely one area that, um, is, we're actively talking about. How do we move towards that? And what does that look like moving forward for next year? So our, our four-year plan is, it's definitely looking at the future, right? So how do we address, uh, digital learning, um, in this area? And this is something we had to pivot real quick. Um, so, you know, moving forward, what does that look like for us is, is definitely in, in our forefront of our discussion right now.
And Director Hampson, this is Dan Goldsman, Principal of the Skill Center. I can add a, a little bit more detail if you like, um, for the immediate, uh, this summer for the Skill Center and just give an example, a concrete example. And yeah, great question. It's, it's not easy to do hands-on learning in a remote setting. Uh, but one strategy that we've been using this year, uh, or, you know, this spring, um, and will continue in the summer for our medical classes, like nursing and, uh, medical offices. It's in, in our, in our summer class, the Intro to Medical Careers. We're looking into, uh, purchasing, uh, sets of stethoscopes and, uh, blood pressure cuffs for each student. And then we'll deliver those to the students so that they can use those at home, practice on their family, practice on themselves, and, and still get that hands-on experience, but at a, in a remote, um, uh, way, uh, following the governor's orders. And so, uh, additionally, we're planning on having, uh, daily teams or Zoom class time for each, uh, class. Um, at least, you know, one or two hours a day on Teams. Um, and then independent work in between those, uh, those meetings so that there'll still be some face-to-face, uh, classroom time, some hands-on learning, and some equipment that they can get used to and use.
Does that answer your question, Director?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Director Harris.
Yeah, I'd like to know how many internships we managed to get post that conference that we had at the Port Conference Center, where lots and lots of promises were made. Did we follow up? Did we snag them?
Jane?
Yes, this is Jane Hendrickson. So yeah, so a little bit, we are pivoting. So that because of COVID, we had, uh, many of our partners that we scheduled out for summertime have pulled back and that, and we certainly have an understanding that, um, they are, you know, trying to, um, re, rethink about how they're hiring back their own staffing, um, in a lot of these ways. However, we do have skilled trades, uh, launch 206, um, companies still on board for this summer. So we do have, um, I believe at, uh, this is active conversation. Uh, I believe there's four companies at this time, and there is definitely talk about, uh, connecting with the city as well, uh, to bring their internship, uh, their internship program on, um, on par with our launch 206. So that's an active conversation with our city partners, um, as of yesterday.
And if we can have more frequent communication and rah-rah in the Friday memo? Nobody loves success like success, and it breeds more. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Next up we'll have Director Hersi. Oh, excuse me. Uh, next up we'll have Director Mack.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, CTE is so important, and I'm, I'm excited to see a plan that is, um, looking to expand and, uh, in particular, consider, uh, providing expanded services through, uh, Rayner Beach when it's renovated and, uh, having those conversations now about how to, um, increase our CTE offerings and engage students. Um, so really, uh, this report's very thorough and, uh, really appreciate all the work that went into it. Um, my one question is related to, uh, maritime CTE pathway and, um, the engagement or conversation, um, about how our students may access uh, that pathway, um, once, I believe, is it Highline who is, it was planning on, um, implementing a, a high school, or is it a different district? I can't remember which.
Highline, Highline, this is Director Rankin. Highline will manage it. And, um, but it's, it's in cooperation, but we, we have, um, Seattle Public Schools is included.
And that, so that's the clarification that I'd like to have is, um, exactly how that works for Seattle Public Schools students, or will work in the future.
Yeah, this is Diane, and that is, um, that's still being discussed, um, as, I mean, obviously, some of it, the progress slowed down a little because of COVID. But the Maritime High School is still being discussed through the Port of Seattle. And yes, Highline would be the sponsoring district. And each district, probably, uh, they're talking about the roadmap districts that are in this region, would each have, uh, a certain number of slots of students that they could send to the Maritime High School. But all of, all of the details are, you know, we, we really haven't had any discussions since COVID closure.
And, and I can, thank you, Dr. Debacker. This is Dan Goldsman, Skill Center Director. I can add a, a little bit of, uh, detail kind of in the, in the immediate future. As you know, you know, fortunately, we have our Maritime Vessel Operations Course that we run out of Seattle Maritime Academy. Uh, we have the summer course, and we have the school year course. So, um, in a normal year, we expect, you know, at least, uh, 25 or more students, uh, to run through our summer programs. And, uh, you know, we're working on getting more and more students in the, in the school year class. Um, so, you know, presently, we certainly have a, a, a pathway for students interested in, in Maritime Vessel Operations. Um, and then, of course, there's, you know, students at Ballard High School have access to those programs as well. Uh, but, you know, our, our goal is, uh, as part of the Youth Maritime Collaborative, who, you know, as, as the port, uh, is also part of that Youth Maritime Collaborative, we're all working together to make sure that we're really just expanding opportunities for students. So that's, you know, anything from those summer, well, even, anything from those spring break trips, like we did this last year. Um, we didn't get to do our spring break trip, but we did our winter, uh, mid-winter break, uh, experience, learning experience for students in maritime, you know, all the way up to, um, advanced Skill Center classes or eventually those high school, uh, the options for high school that, that Highline is considering hosting.
Thank you. Appreciate the information. No further questions from me.
Thanks, Director Mack. Director Devera Smith?
Thank you. Um, I would just add on, I know it's already been mentioned, but we're, we're super excited. We wanna celebrate, um, CTE program for having such a representative demographics that mirror our, our, our district as a whole. Um, also wanted to just give a quick recognize, recognize that we don't talk much about how CTE, um, how CTE is, um, exploration is in, is represented in elementary schools. But I noticed in here that it says, "We do have Amazon First Robotics in 20 elementary schools." So I'm really excited to see that, and I'm happy to know that that is starting there. And, um, also just one small piece to just add on. I mentioned this in committee that on page 18, there are some, some, um, just, I feel like I'm being copy editor police today, but there's some, um, repeat clauses in the 2020, 21 column. The first, second, and a little bit of the third bullet are then repeated again in that same column. So just, uh, a little cleanup there, I guess, but otherwise, it looks great. Thank you for all the work and information. No further questions or comments.
Thank you, Director Devera Smith. And I just have a few quick questions. Um, it mentioned something about a mentoring program. Can you share a little bit more about that? It, it's on, uh, it's within the, um, background, well, Equity Analysis. It talks about the mentoring program, the short-term goal. Is that every SPS African-American?
Yes.
I, yep.
Yep. Uh, is that you, Dr. Perkins?
Yes, I could.
That's part of the strat plan. I'll just, I'll tee it up a little bit. That's part of the strat plan, um, in, uh, as we refer to as Goals Four and Five. So, go ahead, Dr. Kate Perkins.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to add that, as Dr. Debacker said, you know, what a difference a year makes. So our strategic plan work has overlapped heavily with the CTE planning work. So in developing initiatives for Goal Five around career readiness, um, as, has been shared in CNI, one of the key initiatives is gonna be around mentoring that Dr. Williams's team will be leading up. And that mentoring, uh, has been informed by a work group that includes many of our former and current CTE partners. Um, so it is part of the overall effort to implement Goal Five is to ultimately provide mentors, uh, to all of our African-American male, uh, ninth-grade students um, so that they can consider both post-secondary options in terms of college as well as career. Um, so we thought that would be important to include in the CTE plan, um, as a, as a close connection between the strategic plan work and our CTE plan.
Thank you. And, um, the other career I see I had was, it mentions about, we launched our new medical and health course pathway at Rayner Beach, Garfield, Nathan Hale this year, and we'll be expanding access to this high-demand pathway, um, in 2021. And one of those includes Seattle World School. So I, just a couple of questions of, um, how, how are you justifying that it's high demand? I don't necessarily disagree, but how do we know it's high demand? And particularly at Seattle World School, um, do you happen, have a sense about if it will be, uh, in additional languages or other different supports, um, for students there?
I'll, I'll start with the high-demand question, and then I'll ask Ms. Hendrickson to connect on, um, on, on the connection to Seattle World School. Just one thing that Seattle and King County has a lot of is a lot of analysis on labor statistics. And one that, uh, you know, database that we've taken advantage of that now, Washington STEM helps develop is just a projection of all the future careers in the, in the area of, uh, in the Puget Sound area, as well as in Washington State. Um, and we can share that tool per Director Harris's idea, maybe of a Friday Board memo. But just, there's a lot of data on projected job growth in the area, which of course evolves. Uh, but health and medical is, is routinely, uh, in the top three of those areas, uh, where that, where we project, um, those family wage jobs that will be in high demand, uh, going forward. So that's how we're basing it. We're, we're relying on labor statistics that others have analyzed.
Understood.
So I will answer to the second part of that question at Seattle World School specifically. I, uh, they are our newest, um, add-on, uh, to our, um, to launching this program next year. So we're working very closely. So we're working very closely with our principal at Seattle World School, who assured us that all of their teachers are prepared to work with students of different languages. And so, and that was the uniqueness of, of that particular school. So that was, so again, this is, this is a fairly new decision based on students' interest and enrollment, a previous or initial enrollment or interest sheets. And so we just began working with Seattle World School in the last, I would say, since COVID. So in the last four weeks, four or five weeks.
Thank you. And then my last question is about, it also says, for example, as you will see in Strategy One, we continue our efforts to increase access for students further from educational justice to non-traditional pathways, such as health and medical, which we just described, skills trade, skilled trades and IT slash STEM. My question is, what are we actually doing to increase access for students? Is there more money? Are there more classrooms? Is there more, are there more teachers? Are we just using that word? Or is there actual something that illustrates that we are increasing that access?
So, thank you. That's a great question, and I appreciate you asking. Absolutely. We are targeting funding to our high demand pathways and most specifically looking at our schools that are in greatest need. And so, yes, we, we support staffing, we support equipment purchases, we're supporting marketing and working with the schools to make sure that we are at, in this case, a little bit differently this year because we didn't have our, our family nights, but we are working at not only our theater schools into those high schools, but we're bringing in industry career panels to those middle schools as well. So we are definitely targeting not only time and effort, but we also have our industry advisories that are working on career-connected learning outreach activities to engage students at those middle schools' interest in wanting to register in to that program.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then those are all my questions and comments. So now we'll move to introduction item number nine. This is BEX four, excuse me, Approval of Budget Transfer and Award Contract P5132, bid number B012042 to CDK Construction Services, Inc. for the Whitman Middle School Seismic Improvements Project. This came through Operations Committee on April 27th for consideration. And I believe we have Director of Capital Projects and Planning Richard Best briefing us.
Correct, Director DeWolff. I'm gonna check and make sure you can hear me.
We can.
Great, thank you. So we are recommending that the contract be awarded to CDK. CDK is the low responsive bidder, I should say low responsive responsible bidder. Seattle Public Schools received seven bids for this project. The low bid amount was $1,560,000. This is to implement Priority One, so life safety seismic improvements at Whitman Middle School. These are voluntary seismic improvements. I want to be clear with all the school board members, this will not bring the school up to current seismic codes, but it will implement life safe seismic improvements throughout the school. We do need a budget transfer, and the budget transfer amount for this is from the BEX four program contingency, and it's $53,871. And so with that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, well, we'll, we'll move on to directors for comments and questions, starting with our Operations Committee Chair, Director Mack.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Best. There's a few questions that have come through via fax around some of these contracts related to why the bid documents are not included. I think that question comes for nine, 10, 11, 12, many of those, and on down the line. So if you could clarify the question of why the bid, bid information is, is or is not included in this bar at this time?
So about a year ago, Director Mack, Capital Projects and Consultation with Legal Counsel concerning the ADA consent decree started making bid tabulation forms available in the Capital Projects Office. We do not, have not been attaching them to the Board Action Request Forms because of their, they are not ADA accessible, and so it requires, you know, yet another cover sheet be placed on. We've just made folks aware that they are available in our office if the public has an interest in seeing them.
And are they posted somewhere online or not?
No, they're not posted online. They, I believe there is a copy in the Board Office, and then they're available in the Capital Projects Office.
And this changed from a year ago. A year ago, we used to include them, and now we're not?
As part of our ADA consent decree, we do not, we no longer include those bid tabulation forms with our documents. We just note who the low bidder is.
And this has been consistent practice over the last year?
Yes, it's been consistent practice for probably more than a year, but safe to say a year.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. I'm not sure if I have any concerns around that practice or not. I just wanted to daylight that that question was raised, and that's the, the reason for why that does not exist here. Specific to this bar, there was also a question about why a one-time transfer from the BEX four contingency fund? And then I'll kind of tack on to that as to, well, I guess I, I share that same question as to why are we tapping into the contingency fund for this project?
The project bid just slightly over what our estimate was when we did an analysis of the overall project budget. We thought it important to daylight to the school board that we'd need a transfer of funds, and it's $53,871 just based upon the, the low responsive bidder paying some additional Washington State sales tax, paying some additional project permit costs, and then placing just a small amount of funds in the construction contingency for the project. And it's slightly over, I want to emphasize to the school board members, it's just slightly over our architect's estimate.
Okay, thank you. The, the last thing I'll say, and I'll just say this for the future ones coming up too, to not repeat it again, but all of these that had required bid information are up for consideration because when we discuss these projects and ops, those processes had not yet been done yet, and so the, the information was not yet complete. And with that, I'll allow other folks to ask any questions or raise any concerns.
Thanks, Director Mack. Next up is Director Hampson.
No questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Harris.
No questions for me, and I have to bail as the other job calls. My apologies, and great day, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Harris. Yes, I know, and apologies, apologies, we have a jam-packed schedule today, so appreciate you. Director Rankin.
No questions for me.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. I have just a question to follow up on the, on the attachments question. I was wondering what if, if Richard Best could explain maybe what it would take to be able to attach those? What, what would we need to make those ADA compliant and get those attached?
It would, Director Rivera Smith, it would take just revising the forms that we have that we've utilized for our bid tabulation forms. I could work with our contracting services to do that so that they are, you know, potentially ADA. I know we've had conversations about this in the past, we've looked at this in the past, and the determination was made to just make them available upon request to our office. So, but I could review that again and get that information to you. And I could include that in a Friday memo to the board.
Yeah, and I think if the committee, you know, decides that is a priority, that would be good to look into, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I have no questions, Mr. Best. Thank you. Next up, we'll move to introduction item number 10, BEX five, Award Contract P5145 for Athletic Field Lighting Projects at Whitman Middle School. This came through the Operations Committee on April 27th for consideration. Mr. Best, you'll be briefing us again.
Thank you. So the Whitman Middle School Field Lighting Project, we are recommending be awarded to KCDA and Musco Lighting in the amount of 750,000, $757,256. KCDA is a purchasing cooperative and has bid field lighting if, and if Seattle Public Schools were to bid lighting, Musco would be the only competitor that would meet the City of Seattle's light spill requirements. And so KCDA has a competitive situation in which they have bid and received pricing from several different field lighting firms in which Musco was their low bid. And so it allowed for a competitive situation utilizing the KCDA purchasing cooperative for this purchase. I would note that this is placing field lights at Whitman Middle School. Historically, we have had field lights placed at our high schools. When the decision was made by the school board to implement a later start time at high schools, one of the require, one of the problems identified in the programmatic EIS was community and access to our fields. The way Seattle Public Schools is responding to community access to our fields is to increase the amount of fields that we have lit by adding middle schools to field lighting. I will also note that we did add field lighting projects at Ballard High School, Roosevelt, Franklin, Cleveland, Garfield, and Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. So this is just a continuation of that program to address this programmatic environmental impact statement condition. So this at Whitman Middle School will light both the soccer field, soccer football field, and the softball baseball field, and provides 11 light poles, nine of them which are 80 feet, I think, and two which are 70 feet. And I think that narrative, yeah, is in the, in the background information. I'll open it up to questions, Director DeWolff.
Thank you. All right, we'll start, we'll start with Director Mack, Operations Committee Chair.
Yes, thank you. We've passed in the, with previous boards, a number of field lighting projects in that the new lighting systems are more directive and have less spillage, so they're not as bright and challenging for neighbors. We have gotten some community questions and comments around the community engagement around this project and the impact of the light, as well as whether or not the environmental impact, or environmental impact statement has been done, CEPA requirements, et cetera. Can you briefly go over what community engagement has been done on this project as well as the environmental impact CEPA requirements?
Sure. We've had two community meetings concerning the field lighting project at Whitman Middle School. We have previously had a community meeting also associated with our CEPA. Again, that is a practice that we have suspended and no, no longer are implementing CEPA. Those meetings primarily became meetings in which, you know, it garnered opposition, and an individual would lead, you know, would utilize those meetings to garner opposition. And so consequently, we have suspended those meetings. But we did have two community meetings in which it came out, and we presented the projects, we addressed questions, and we did address community concerns. We implemented a traffic analysis to understand what the parking would be like. We do have a large parking lot at Whitman Middle School, and so I feel like we have addressed the CEPA. We did have our CEPA appealed. The Hearing Examiner affirmed the CEPA documents that we did, and there's been no administrative action taken, Director Mack. And administrative action would be in a, in a legal setting. The adminis-
Have we heard a lot of community of the neighbors concern around the potential light spillage and whether or not that should be a concern or that there may be further, I don't know, neighborhood contesting of this project?
So the City of Seattle has a very rigorous light spill requirement, literally point-two-foot candles at your property line, and we work with our lighting consultants to make sure that we are well within those guidelines. And I will note, Musco's lighting project, product allows you to direct light so that it is on the field at the playing surface and not spilling out beyond the playing surface. So they have a very superior product to what else is on the market. I will also note that with light emitting diodes, or commonly referred to as LED technology, that also has helped not have the light spill that you, you used to have with the large metal halide lights that were previously utilized.
Great, thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time. Just wanted to get that onto the record for clarification around those specific points as there were some emails and faxes sent asking those things. I rest at this point.
Thank you, Director Mack. Director Hampson?
No further questions for me at this point. Director Mack covered them. Thank you.
Director Rankin?
Yeah, same for me. I was gonna ask about the email that we received, so thanks for that information.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Yeah, likewise, I was, I was interested in that because we did get a couple of emails patients in regarding this. And honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned with property values of neighbor. I mean, it's not that it's not important, but you know, same, it's the city, it's with growth. What I'm more concerned with is the idea, you know, the accusation that, that this project is not in line with our, with the BEX guiding principles. So I'm wondering if, Richard, if you can offer any, you know, more justification for this being in line with those guiding principles?
Director Rivera Smith, we are working on, first, we're working on installing field lights at the high school athletic fields throughout the City of Seattle. And now we are beginning installing, having completed the high schools, we're beginning installing field lights at our middle schools. And just, I don't understand where that comment is coming from, from an equity standpoint, we're literally installing field lights throughout the district. Mercer Middle Schools, I would, would note, would just be done when we replace Mercer Middle School. We're looking at trying to create a field with field lights at that school site. That is potentially a landmarked building, so it could be impacted by that. But Aki Kurosi does not have, that's a parks, field, but that is lit. We have lit Cleveland High School, so I'm not sure where that's coming from.
Yeah, well, I guess, so I guess, I guess you haven't seen the email, I'm sorry, I shouldn't assume you've seen it. I think there- I think there, the ones that there's, this person is specifically, um, claiming is that under the guiding principle of, um, building conditions and, and educational alignment, that there's claiming that this, that this project is really not consistent with that of serving our students because the idea is that this is mostly to provide lighting hours for South Public, for Seattle Parks Department's use of our fields, which isn't directly our students, I guess. And this, that's one of their claims. Another is just about the, um, the financials, the environmental and financial stability principle. Because on top of the lighting that we're gonna put in, there, we're also committing to clearly the, um, energy usage costs, energy management for the system, the maintenance costs. Um, and then maybe there should be a question about the SEPA, but we talked about that already.
And, and I will just note that we do get reimbursed, um, for our field use when it's outside, um, uh, when it's scheduled by the community through the Parks District. The Seattle Public Schools does get reimbursed for the lighting costs. Uh, we're trying to provide more access. Um, today, many of our club sports are on parks-related fields. Um, and we're trying to get our club sports back on Seattle Public Schools fields. And one of the ways to do that is to provide opportunities for more, for more access in the nighttime, uh, given the change in secondary school times. And so the field lighting projects are, um, achieving that objective.
Thank you. And so, and then, um, again, like I said, the writer wrote about the SEPA, which I know Director Mack already addressed. And you mentioned that there were, um, a couple, there were two actual in-person-
We did have two community meetings, um, associated with this project, but we did not have a SEPA-specific community meeting associated with this project.
And then, you know the dates of those community meetings?
No, but I can get that for you, and we can include it in an updated bar, and I'll just make a note.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. Uh, my question, Mr. Best, is just about, um, you had talked about the two candles, uh, length, and then who, how do we get, uh, approval? Or, I guess, how is the city involved with, you know, giving us a thumbs up that what we've done follows the letter of the law? How do we?
So, as part of the commissioning process for the field lights, um, Director DeWolff, we will be out there with a foot candle measure, making sure that we comply with, uh, City of Seattle's requirements.
Uh, understood. I guess what I'm saying is, who, who affirms that you've done what you said with, with the candle?
We affirm to the City of Seattle that we've done what we said we were going to do. And then if it's questioned, um, they, they will, uh, they have a permit enforcement, um, division, and they will come out and look to confirm that it is accurate. But we will be taking foot candle measurements at property lines to, um, note that the theoretical is actu- is, uh, is being complied with in actuality.
Thank you, Mr.
One, can I inter- come on, this is Director Rivera Smith. I had one last thing, I forgot. I'm sorry, can I ask? Well, first, it was in relation to, uh, Richard, he's gonna add the dates for those meetings. Could you also, Richard, add the steps you took to ad- you guys took to advertise for those meetings? So we know how people could have found out about them? Thank you.
Okay, and we'll now move to introduction item number 11. This is BEX 5 Award Construction Contract, Contract P5140, Bid Number B032062 to Field Turf USA for the Athletic Field Improvements at Ballard High School Project. This came through the Operations Committee on April 27th for consideration. Uh, and just a time check for folks, we have about, uh, it's about 4:15, and we have about, uh, nine items to go. So, Mr. Best, uh, I believe you'll be briefing us.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I scrolled by Ballard High School and went to Nathan Hill.
Understood, Norris.
Sorry about that. So, uh, Ballard High School, we are recommending, uh, awarding the contract to, um, Field Turf. Uh, we are essentially replacing a synthetic field with a synthetic field. The one significant difference is, and again, this is a prior board, um, I think Director Mack, Director DeWolff, you're familiar. We now utilize a cork infill in lieu of, uh, crumb rubber in our fields, and this will replace the crumb rubber, um, synthetic field at Ballard High School with a cork infill, um, manufactured by Field Turf. Cost of the project is six hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And this is just, it's reached the end of its life. A, um, synthetic field lasts about ten years. And so, we do resiliency testing in the ninth and tenth year to kind of look at its longevity, as to when it needs to be replaced. And Ballard High School's, uh, needs to be replaced this summer.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Best. I will start with our Operations Committee Chair, Director Mack, and then call in question, question, excuse me, on directors, uh, for questions and comments in alphabetical order after that.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'll just note that the question around why the bid contract documents are not included was answered previously. And, um, I don't have any specific questions to this, um, other than support for cork versus the other alternative. And, um, that having safe, uh, fields for our students' use is incredibly important.
Thank you. Director Hampson?
Uh, yeah, thanks for this. I, I remember when the, uh, when the board voted to go to, um, to cork. And, uh, I'm just curious, uh, do, is it too soon to say how it's bearing? I know they started first up on, at Kyle Anderson. Do we have any sense of whether it's bearing better than the?
The, we ha- we struggled the first year, uh, Director, Director Hampson, um, with maintenance with the cork because it's lighter, it needs to get settled into the, to the, um, you know, the turf, um, element, uh. But it seems after the first year, I would say the maintenance requirements look very similar to crumb rubber. Our grounds department, you know, um, have, we now have numerous fields with cork. Our grounds department personnel are much, uh, more familiar with working with cork. They anticipate the problems that they're gonna have the first year. They're proactively out there, um, working those fields, knowing they have to go to those fields after significant, uh, rain events to get the cork back into place. Once it gets settled into the turf, um, we don't have a problem with it, um, you know, rising up again, um, after that first year. That's a great question, and I appreciate that question. Um, but it, um, our, we haven't had problems. We've been very-
So far, so good.
Yep, so far, so good. And I will note, that is also the Park District. We do benchmark with the Park District on maintenance of our cork fields. That's also their experience.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you for that. I know it's important to get those replaced. A lot of us have spent a lot of time on those, on those fields and come home with a lot of that stuff in our clothes. And, um, they come into our homes and, um, stay in your shoes forever. And, uh, so anytime we can, uh, make it a better and, and potentially healthier, safer experience for kids, uh, and families, I think it's a good thing. So, thank you for this.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Director Rankin?
Nope, no question. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and, Mr. Best, my only question is around, I think what, uh, I'm curious about, uh, our schools. I imagine that we are not fully capturing the amount of community use as well on these. So, do you think that that plays a role in, um, how quickly, I guess, these deteriorate or need to be replaced? I, I imagine different parts of the city have, um, turf and fields that might be used by community more than others.
Um, I, I could just say, uh, that the expected life, um, well, I'll back up and say, synthetic turf fields are utilized about ten times more than natural grass fields. And the expected life of a synthetic turf field is, um, ten years. We monitor, uh, for two things. We monitor for turf length, which is important for footing, good footing. And then we also monitor for resiliencies. So, with tackle football, if you get, you know, uh, tackled, you're, we know that, that we have a safe padding in which, um, a student or, or a child is gonna land on. We, we are very conservative, um, in those, and we have pretty much followed manufacturers' recommendations. With ten years, we do have a landscape architect that we work with, DA Hogan Associates, who helps us design these fields as well, is very knowledgeable about turf, and which we talk about expectancies. When I first arrived here six years ago, not all of our fields had what they called an, an E-layer or elastic layer underneath, uh, the fields. We have since moved to getting all of our fields with an E-layer underneath because it does provide a level of safety for student athletes, um, that was better than the gravel pad that was permitted. And only has to be installed once, and then, um, can be utilized for every synthetic turf field. Afterwards, you're only replacing the grass. Um, but we monitor it pretty closely, Director DeWolff, and ten years is longevity. As to whether different areas, um, experience, I can say pretty much all fields are pretty heavily utilized. The one I know, and I think it's more because it's new, then, uh, Cleveland High School's field has seen a little bit less use. Um, our facilities operations department does a great job of tracking field use. They have a scheduling program, um, in school, dude. And so we're able to monitor that use.
Thank you, Mr. Best. All right, we'll move on to introduction item number 12, uh, BTA, uh, 4 Award Construction Contract K5120, Bid Number B032063 to Coast to Coast Turf for the Athletic Field Improvements at Nathan Hill High School and Jane Adams Middle School Project. This came through the Operations Committee on April 27th for consideration. Mr. Best, uh, you'll be briefing us again.
And again, both these, uh, existing fields are synthetic turf. Um, we are replacing, uh, them. And again, going from a crumb rubber infill to a cork infill. Um, we did have four bids on this project. Coast to Coast Turf was the low bidder. Coast to Coast Turf has done projects, um, in the past for Seattle Public Schools. Um, and so recommending that they be awarded this contract. I will note that there were two alternates, um, that we're also recommending. One of the alternates was to replace, um, some of the chain-linked fence at Jane Adams Middle School that was not in good condition. And then the other alternate was to provide storage sheds for both pole vault and, um, pole vault and, uh, high jump equipment at Nathan Hill High School.
Thank you, Mr. Best. All right, we'll move to Director Mack, who's our Operations Committee Chair first.
Uh, this is similar to the previous, um, contract, and I don't have any additional questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Director Hampson?
No questions for me. Thank you.
You, Director Rankin?
I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and none here as well, Mr. Best. We'll now move to introduction item number 13, BEX 5 Award Construction Contract P5146, Bid Number B012039 to Olympic Peninsula Construction, Inc., for the North Beach Elementary School, Sacagawea Elementary School, and Jane Adams Middle School Pavement Repairs Project. This came through the Operations Committee on April 27th for consideration. Mr. Best, you'll be briefing us again.
So this is an area, uh, all three schools have, um, asphalt that's in very poor condition. Two of the schools, North Beach Elementary School and Sacagawea, it is the playgrounds. Um, this will be pulverizing the existing asphalt and then, uh, implementing some stormwater system repairs, and then putting an asphalt overlay over, um, that pulverized asphalt, uh, to create a smooth surface in which, um, students can play on. At Jane Adams Middle School, the asphalt, uh, repairs are in the northwest parking lot. Um, and again, it is to address alligatored and heaved asphalt. Um, again, we're, um, pulverizing the existing asphalt, we're implementing stormwater repairs, and then putting an asphalt overlay over that new crushed surface. So, um, Olympic Peninsula was the low-responsive bidder. Um, we had one, um, alternate here, uh, to do some work underneath the covered play structure, and we're recommending acceptance of that as well. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
You moved first to Director Mack, who is our Operations Committee Chair.
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, I, I just wanna note that this, for this, these projects in particular, um, the importance of getting them moving, that as part of BEX 5, uh, when we were going through the process of selecting, um, projects and, um, identified various areas in schools that actually wouldn't end up on BEX 5 in total, there were some safety issues, uh, recognized, and these, um, this is one of them. Um, and so I'm grateful for this, these projects moving forward because, uh, the pavement in, on these schools is, uh, is a safety hazard at this point. And so moving forward on getting these done, um, increases the, uh, uh, safety for our students and access for, um, uh, uh, those with disabilities as well. So, um, no other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Best, for continuing to move these, uh, projects forward.
Thank you, Director Mack. Next, we'll have Director Hampson.
Um, yeah, is there, um, anything, will, will there be any, I'm sorry, any increased accessibility, um, coming with this project?
Um, I would say, I would echo what Director Mack said. The condition of these asphalt play areas is very, very poor. And implementing these repairs will make it easier, um, for students with disabilities to, you know, utilize the playground. Um, and I will also note this, we, we are out, um, as part of our facilities condition assessment col- um, uh, process for this year, collecting information about the condition of our asphalt play areas. So that we can address this, um, and, and have a replacement schedule, um, for all of our schools.
And it, but does this extend, or is, are the transitions, um, being affected at all? Are they being improved, or is it just the, um, the enclosed kind of space of asphalt that is the playground?
Yeah, these areas will meet, um, ADA requirements. Um, Director Hampson?
Okay, so from sidewalks and parking lots and all that? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Hard to meet those.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Rankin?
No questions.
Thank you. Director Rivera Smith?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, um, yeah, no questions. I, I appreciate the, the adding of the locations. I know that in committee, it was asked, I asked, I think I asked where those, where they were gonna be. And so, thank you for, um, including the location so we can see exactly where we're talking about at these schools. I agree, the asphalt is in bad, bad need to repair. Um, I know personally at Sacagawea, um, the playground there, so thank you for that. Um, no other questions?
Thank you. Uh, and I have no questions at this time for you, Mr. Best, on this item. So we'll now move to introduction item number 14, 2020, 2020 through 2022, Franz Family Bakery Two-Year Bread Agreement Renewal. This came to the Operations Committee on May 14th for approval. And, uh, joining us today is Director of Nutrition Services, Eric Smith. And, uh, before we begin, do wanna deeply apologize. I know we're about an hour and a half past our, uh, time, and I appreciate your, your patience, uh, and I will let you jump in with, uh, your briefing.
All right. Uh, thank you, Director DeWolff. Uh, today's bar is for the renewal of the contract with Franz Family Bakery for two additional years, covering the period from September 1st, 2020 to August 31st, 2022. USDA guidelines requires that we offer five different components to students, uh, for their meals, a grain, protein, fruit, vegetable, and milk. This contract will put us in compliance for the grain category. Uh, the bread products are used for breakfast, lunch, and summer meals. All products are made in a nut-free facility. This year, Franz has provided reliable service, um, and has received a satisfactory evaluation. They've also shown flexibility- and has received a satisfactory evaluation. They've also shown flexibility with their deliveries and service during this time. It is in the best interest of the district for us to continue working with a local company, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Director Smith, we'll now move to director's questions and comments, starting with Director Mack, who is our operations committee chair.
Yes, thank you. This came to Ops and was late, we were late, a half hour late on that agenda. So again, I'll appreciate staff picking around to do this important work. And I also appreciate the noting that this bakery is a nut-free bakery, which is important for the safety of our students with nut allergies in our district. And I have no other further questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Director Mack. Director Hampson, Hampson.
I'm super glad that we have a local company that we can contract with. I've got a house full of Franz bread and it, you know, we don't have a lot of opportunities like this in a, in a city that is largely limited in terms of any kind of manufacturing. So I think it's, it's a great partnership and I support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Director Rankin.
Nope, I don't have any questions. But I also want to just restate what I said in committee, which was my just deep thanks and appreciation for Mr. Smith and the whole nutrition services team and their ability to pivot to serving students in a wholly different way during this time and then continuing with keeping up with, you know, businesses, business as needed to continue. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. I mean, I would love a future in which we can bake fresh bread for our students. I know that's not happening anytime soon, but I'm glad we do have a relationship with a local bakery that we can get our breads from. So thank you for all the work here and no questions or comments.
Thank you. I have no other questions for you as well, Director Smith, but I just want to highlight at least the fact that to Director Rankin's point, the ability to quickly pivot and now serve around 36,000 lunches a week is quite huge. So thank you for the work and thank you to your team. And if you're lucky enough to be in District Five where I represent you, sometimes depending on the way the wind blows, you can hear, you can see, you can smell Franz Bakery from all over. So now we will move to introduction item number 15. This is Bex five award contracts P one seven four five, P one seven four seven, P one seven four eight, P one seven four six. Bingo. To Building Envelope Technology and Research, Inc., BET and R for technical consultation services for design oversight and onsite construction observation of the building envelope, exterior cladding systems and roofing systems for the Kimball, Northgate, Ulands, and West Seattle Elementary Schools projects. This came to the operations committee on May 14th for approval. Mr. Best, you'll be briefing us again.
Yes. So I combined the four contracts into one bar. And they're all for similar work related to the building envelope and then roofing systems. This is really Seattle Public Schools quality control, quality assurance that are building envelopes and roofing systems when designed and when built will perform as anticipated. We have historically had some problems on prior projects. I think Director Mack and Director DeWolf, you might be aware that we have replaced the roof at Ballard School and then obviously we're having some issues also at Rocking Star Elementary School related to the roofing system. So Director of Facilities Operations Frank Griffin and myself have put together a quality control, quality assurance program to make sure that our building envelopes perform as anticipated, that they do not leak, that we do not have moisture intrusion problems in our schools. And to make sure that they're not mold issues related with those moisture intrusion problems. Director Griffin had two of his foremen participate, the glazing foreman Ed Dayton, and then his roofing foreman Brian Z on the selection committee BET and R was selected as the technical consultant. And then Director Griffin and I developed the scope of work that you see actually associated with these contracts. Scope of work includes both design input and reviewing the design documents prior to going to bid, participating in the bid award phase to let contractors know that this is a very serious area for Seattle Public Schools and then to let them to have the work observed on a halftime basis as the different exterior cladding systems and roofing systems are being built for Seattle Public Schools. We anticipate from the scope of work that this is, that there will be a representative onsite 50% of the time while these work activities are occurring. When you look at cladding, you got to think of both the exterior wall envelope, but then you also have to think about below grade. We know that Kimball Elementary School, Ulands, and West Seattle all are sites with a fair amount of topography. They all have a fair amount of hydrology at those sites when you read the geotechnical reports. And so that below grade waterproofing is critically important to keep out of the occupied spaces. And then Northgate Elementary School, while it doesn't have a significant amount of topography, it does have a large retaining wall on that site. And so again, we are going to have some low-grade waterproofing required there at that new retaining wall that we'll be constructing. And so would open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Best. We'll start with Director Mack, who's our operations committee chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Best and your team for putting together this work to ensure that the construction projects are sound and the roofing systems and that we do not, the building envelopes, et cetera, do not have problems in the future. As you know, and I think it was maybe Director Rankin who said this at the, during Ops, that it's the worst to have rain coming down on your head in school. And that this work and these contracts will mitigate that risk in our buildings and ensure that we have safe environments for our students going forward. So thank you, and I don't have any additional comments or questions at this time.
Thanks, Director Mack. Director Hampson.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Yeah, just echoing what Director Mack said. What I had mentioned was that, you know, rain leaking through tiles or something is one thing, but the bigger sort of invisible issue that can happen is moisture that builds up between between the interior wall and the exterior wall and in overhead space between the, or between the ceiling and the roof. And then that can cause, you know, mold and all kinds of stuff. So it's super, super critical for the health and safety of our, of our students that that this work is done in a, you know, if the, the technical part is, is actually different expertise and different issues than the physical building of a roof. So yeah, I think we've seen with the Rising Star Building. Whoops, sorry, issues that can happen with roof, roofing and moisture not cooperating. So.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no questions as well, Mr. Best. So we'll move to introduction item number 16. This is Bex five distress school grant and K through, K through three class size reduction grant. Award construction contract P five one four nine for bid number B zero one two zero four nine to Allied Construction Associates, Inc. For the West Woodland Elementary Edition and Modernization Project. This came to the operations committee on May 14th for consideration. Mr. Best, back to you.
Thank you, Director DeWolf. So we received six bids for West Woodland Elementary School Edition and Modernization project. We are adding 12 classrooms and a gymnasium to West Woodland Elementary School. Will be repurposing their existing gymnasium for a commons area, and then we will be doing a light touch to the existing building in replacing some some of their existing, some of their existing providing some new technologies so that it's consistent throughout all the buildings and all the classrooms look the same. And then providing some consistent communication pathways as well. We're recommending that this contract be awarded to Allied Construction and Associates. And we are also needing a budget transfer of $1.7 million from the Bex five program contingency. I will note that some of these classrooms were funded through the case, the K three class size reduction grant. And then also the other classrooms that are not funded from the K three class size reduction grant were, were funded from stress school grant. We'll be able to relocate seven portable off this site when this work is complete. Everybody will be back within building and we will be able to utilize those portables elsewhere in Seattle Public Schools system.
Thank you, Mr. Best. All right, we'll start with Director Mack, operations committee chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Best, for the overview. I think I just would note for the public that there's extensive conversation about this project and the the design review happened in Ops and those, that PowerPoint and the minutes can be reviewed. Mr. Best, can you, do you remember which Ops meeting that was, what date that was?
I don't, but I can have it added to this bar when it comes back for you, before you for approval, Director Mack.
Yeah, I think that might be helpful to, you know, be able to point folks back to that meeting, that presentation where a lot of the conversation took place and that'd be useful for, for the bar and maybe actually similar similar bars going forward. It might be a good addition just to have as a background on, on the projects. So I don't have any additional questions at this time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Director Mack. Director Hampson.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no questions for you on this item, Mr. Best. So we'll now move to introduction item number 17, BTA four slash OSPI School Construction Assistance Program slash distress schools grant, resolution 2019 slash 20 dash 30 acceptance of the building commission report for Magnolia Elementary School renovation and addition project. This came to the operations committee on May 14th for approval. Mr. Best, you'll be briefing us again.
Yes. So your acceptance and then passage of the resolution is required by OSPI for our release of retainage. It's part of the closeout process. Is a systematic process in which we test the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems to make sure that they are indeed functioning as designed. We have an coordinator, Mike McBee was heavily involved in this project. And then Mike Kennedy has taken on the very end closeout of this project with the commissioning agent to make all the items that were identified needed correction, correct. I will note that the irrigation system had been turned off. It is now back functioning. You has been commissioned. That was an exception that was noted in EEI's letter on, on this project, but to the board members aware that that has been corrected or has been tested now and it is functioning as designed. Commissioning, I will also note, is required by the city of Seattle and it needs to be done by a third-party commissioning agent. EEI was the commissioning agent for this project. I will also note that Seattle Public School Mechanical, Electrical Plum Coordinators are both very strong at making sure that these building systems are indeed functioning in the manner which are originally intended. And they literally have involvement from the very beginning of the project, all the way through to, through to the end. Usually the commissioning agent comes on the end of the construction documents, bid award phase and over these the construction phase. So Mike McBee and Mike Kennedy's involvement is, is very much welcome capital projects and planning. So to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Best. All right, we'll start with Director Mack, operations committee chair.
Just want to underscore the comments around the importance and thoroughness of this part of the process, the commissioning and how it's dot in the i's and crossing the t's to make sure everything works well and happy to see this coming forward on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hampson.
No questions for me. Thank you.
You, Director Rankin.
Nope, sorry. I came outside for it to be quieter and now there have been sirens every 15 minutes. So yeah, no, I don't have any questions, but sorry for the noise.
Thank you. No worries. Director Rivera Smith.
No questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have none here as well, Mr. Best, and we'll move to introduction item number 18 as well with you, and it is BTA four approval of construction change order number 12 for the Webster School Modernization and Addition Projects. This came to the operations committee on May 14th for approval. One last time, Mr. Best.
Oh, the change number 12, as you indicated, Director DeWolf. This is really four items that are totaling $479,808. Board policy, you have to approve these change orders. The four items are for for the established, where we removed the existing covered 1930s covered play area. There was a substantial amount of damage to the existing brick that we were not able to see at the time we there to the demolition of that covered play area. We're asking for approval to repair that and put brick back in that area. The concrete base has also was very much worn with the covered play area construction. We're asking for approval to reestablish that concrete base on the north building. Put a water repellent and a graffiti coating on the masonry and then to implement structural repairs to the cornice. When we demolished the existing roof, we were able to then look at the condition of the framing for the cornice. The cornice is actually a sheet metal cornice with wood framing. It is not terracotta or stone. And that wood framing had obviously been exposed to a significant amount of stormwater. It was you had a substantial amount of rot. And so we're recommending that it, well, it needs to be repaired because this landmark thing, we don't really have a lot of options. We have to repair the cornice in the manner in which it was originally constructed. And so we're recommending approval of for the Webster School.
Thank you, Mr. Best. We'll start with Director Mack, operations committee. Thank you, Mr. Best. We'll start with Director Mack, operations committee chair.
Just to note that old buildings are difficult to know what you're going to uncover in renovation and it's unfortunate, but costs get incurred, but again, the safety of our students is paramount and this change order reflects work that needs to be done in order to make the building safe. And also just want to note that the school is delayed in its overall opening from the original expectation due to the situation around COVID, et cetera. And if, Mr. Best, you could note in this bar also the, when we had the design review for the Webster School Modernization project, that'd be helpful. No other thoughts or questions at the time.
Thank you. Director Hampson.
No question. Thank you.
You, Director Rankin.
None for me.
Thank you, Director Nevada.
None. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And none for me, Richard, and thank you so much for your patience. I know we've been over a considerable amount of time. But obviously we had a lot of good conversations today. So now we'll move to board comment section agenda. Just remind directors, we are at 4:51, so I'll move alphabetically through the list, but please try to keep your comments as brief as possible, but obviously you're free to do what you'd like. We'll start with Director Hampson.
Hi, just to keep it short, I want to go all the way back to the beginning of the meeting and echo my support for the resolution to recognize the first Wednesday, I believe in June, as gun safety day, and I will be supporting that. And I just want to remind everyone that gun violence includes violence perpetrated by police. And that it's been, I know it's been a rough week already for all the reasons that come with the coronavirus. People under tremendous amount of stress and now with the recent murder in Minneapolis of a black male who represents the students that we are working so hard to center and eliminating racial bias and practices in our own education system. It makes the work that much more paramount and it's it's a tough time, but I will use that opportunity to recognize that that is one of the worst indicators of how badly we need gun safety in our schools and elsewhere. And that there's some deeply embedded racism that is at the heart of that, so. With that, I will pass it along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Mack.
I will echo Director Hampson's comments around support for the gun violence safety resolution. We first adopted one in 2017 and it is incredibly distressing that we are not making much progress in this area, so. Happy to stand up and support every effort that we can to increase safety of our students and our community. I also just want to share with my fellow directors and the public around the WASDA legislative or legislative advocacy process that's going on. As you all know, I sit on the Legislative Committee for the Washington State School Directors Association. And even in this time of meeting slowdown, the work is continuing. The position proposals have been submitted. Deadline was May 20th. Those can come from any director, school district. And we'll be considering those in all-day meetings Friday and Saturday that we'll be conducting via Zoom to review the proposals. These proposals, if they get moved forward, will be considered by the full WASDA organization at Leg Assembly, which is in the fall, and I apologize for not having the date at this time, but we have the opportunity as a board, if we would like to potentially go back and sponsor any of those proposals later on, and we also have the opportunity to vote them up or down when they come in front of the full assembly. And so just wanted to bring that to your all attention. And also I just want to give a shout out to all parents, guardians, students that are managing life during this time and you know, the challenges that it has. One thing that I'm noticing is that it's increasing the amount of time we need to spend writing and communicating in email. And how important it is for us to, as a district, continue to focus our efforts on literacy and those sorts of things. Because it's becoming so much more critically important for communication and access to community. And with that, thank you and thank you all for working through all this really important meeting, even though we're a couple hours overtime, unfortunately. You know, we're continuing to move the work forward that needs to move forward for our students and community, and I appreciate all of you and thank you. Wash your hands, like the governor says.
Thank you, Director Mack. Great reminder. Director Rankin.
Yeah, thanks. I also am absolutely supportive of the the statement to support the Gun Violence Awareness Day. And for anyone wanting to participate or show support, the request from the community groups that organize that is to wear orange. So I will definitely be signing that in my capacity as a individual board director. With that too, something that Director Rivera Smith and I had been looking into before COVID required us to cease things that were not necessary in routine was adopting a, or looking at a resolution that had been adopted by districts in Colorado and California supporting the inclusion of information about local safe gun storage laws in first aid packets. So that is something that I hope we can resume again because not to, you know, as school board directors, we can't do anything to change state legislation, but we can support our families by reminding people or ensuring that they know what the safe gun storage laws are. Because as we know, access to firearms greatly increases the likelihood of there being gun violence. So and also have been speaking to Chief Jesse about sending health and safety information out to our families during the closure, including mental health and mental health resources, domestic abuse resources and gun safety information and resources, so. Yeah, definitely support this day of increasing awareness and protecting our communities. Two more quick things are, there's a special education document that is a technical staff document and I've asked Consey Dr. Pedrosa for a family version of that that should be ready and has gone before legal to be shared out. There's a question about middle school silence that I'm also getting information from Dr. Pedrosa about. And I just wanted to really quickly thank Heidi for telling us about Let's Talk and just note that she very graciously allowed me an hour of her time yesterday to show me the different features of it. And it's something that I think would help us in our communication and serving our families a lot better. So I just wanted to bring our attention back to that and say thanks.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Nevada Smith.
Thank you. I'll keep it short. Of course, I want to just thank Superintendent Juno for recognizing and proclaiming the first Friday of June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day for Seattle Public Schools. So thankful for her doing that and I'm happy to sign on to that in my personal capacity. It is, it's important to recognize that the victims of gun violence are not just the people who are actually taking bullets, but the families and loved ones and friends and the wider community who suffers through this. So recognition and attention on that is valuable and needed. I'm glad that Director Rankin mentioned the efforts we were working on before COVID to get the safe gun storage policy or resolution on our board and her and I believe, or I know I am, I think she is too, are both going to be attending. They're having a virtual gala. They had to take it virtual because of COVID and that's on June 1st. So you can find out more, anybody who's interested about the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, their website's pretty easy. It's gunresponsibility.org. So I can click up there and find out what their efforts are. Anybody, I am hoping to learn more there and anyone else who wants to join in is welcome, so thank you again. Have a good night.
Thank you, Director Nevada Smith. And my only comments today are, thank you everybody for your patience and grace as we move through a little bit longer than normal meeting, but I also wanted to elevate the fact that today we lost a pretty big champion in the queer LGBTQ community, Larry Kramer, who led the vocal movement to fight and elevate the public health crisis known as HIV and AIDS in the 80s when the rest of the country was ignoring these calls, has died. And I just wanted to read a little portion from the Stranger's article today about him. This morning, the New York Times led their obituary of Larry Kramer by noting that his abusive approach overshadows his achievements. But neither abusive nor confrontational really capture Kramer's approach. I often think about how Reagan's White House laughed openly about the idea of queer death during the worst years of the epidemic. That dismissive attitude, one might call it an abusive approach, captures a horrible political cruelty from which it is sometimes feels there's no escape. There are those for whom the suffering of others is a funny trifle, as long as it's the others who are suffering. It feels so easy to give up on caring, to resign ourselves to the cruelty, to expect it, to decide there's no point to resisting. Larry never gave up. It wasn't just the cruelty that made him mad. It was the idea that we have no choice but to take it. With that, I have no further comments and thank you all again for joining us today on this extra long meeting and I will, we will talk to you very soon. This meeting is now officially adjourned at 5:02 PM because there's no further business and thank you everybody for joining us.
Thank you. Good night or good evening.
Thank you, everybody.